Sounds like she might have to leave, so Cindy, can you take that? Thank you. We have some agenda adjustments we'd like to add. What would you like to do?
We would like to allow Chris Lucier from our local veterans to make a presentation coming up, and then I know you have a presentation or two yourself.
Right. So will we do presentations after nominations, resignations, and correspondence? Will that be the best thing to do?
We can do that.
Okay. So are there any objections to those agenda adjustments? Are there any other agenda adjustments? Okay. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to... Let me just do a quick introduction. We have Liz Brown over there as our co-op school board member. Next to her is Rick Barnes, our principal of Hollis Brookline High School. Beth Williams is here. Vice Chair Tom Solon is arriving. I'm the chair, Holly Darlo Babcock. We have Andy Corey, our superintendent of schools. Gina Burksgog, our assistant superintendent in charge of curriculum and instruction. Bob Thompson is here. He's our assistant superintendent in charge of student services. And Cindy Van Conant rounds us out as another school board member. So we are currently five board members here. Great. We, Kate Stoll and Krista Whalen, both have excused absences. So now I'd like to turn this over to Superintendent Corey on nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
At this time, I just wanted to review our recent hires for the board. This is for informational purposes. At the middle school, we hired Scott Truckcott for a computer teacher at a bachelor's step eight for $53,890. Jessica Belch will be a middle school Spanish teacher. She has her master's with 16 years' experience for a salary of $72,182. We have Danielle Cambrey, who will be eighth grade science. She has her bachelor's plus 15 at step five for a salary of $51,506. And we hired Danielle Barubi as the middle school nurse. She has her bachelor's step 10 at $56,618. At the high school, Jordan Brown will be joining us in English. He is master's step one at $49,839. Nicole Fortuna will be joining us in PE at master's step one at $49,839. Corey Kofold will be joining us in social studies at a master's step two at $51,085. And our high school case manager, Bethany Beck, will be joining us with her master's degree in step 18 for $76,643. That means we still have to fill a .6 physical education teacher, and we are presently concluding our last math opening and should be able to report that out next month. So those are the recent hires.
Anything else?
That's it on that section.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to invite Chris Lucier to the microphone. I think he has a presentation to make.
Thank you for allowing us to join you here this evening. We're with the Hollis Memorial VFW Post 11373. But we come here really representing all the veterans in our community. We're here to say thank you. As many of you know, the SAU 41 is a very welcoming place for veterans. And nowhere is that more evident than at the Hollis Brookline High School with outgoing Principal Richard Barnes at the helm. A few examples, like veterans in the classroom where we're invited to speak to the kids and they ask us questions and we engage. Homefront club assemblies at holidays like Veterans Day when we are invited into the school to be recognized. And if I can go off script a little bit, anyone who has served, and I recognize a few faces in the crowd, remembers a moment in their time when they came home and was welcomed home or was reunited with those they loved. I call that my homecoming moment. When we walk through the doors of the gymnasium at the high school and the kids are there to greet us and welcome us and they cheer for us, it brings me back. It's a powerful moment for me, and I know it is for a lot of the other veterans. So we are here to say thank you to Principal Barnes as he moves on to another chapter in his life. We were very often asked to come to the school for both academic and patriotic events. Our relationship with the Hollis Brookline High School is really an envy of the state of New Hampshire veterans community. They don't have a relationship with the schools like we do here. And all the way up to the commander of the State of New Hampshire VFW, they know about Hollis Brookline High School. They know about the SAU 41. So Commander, would you please present?
Principal Barnes, would you please step forward? I'll read the citation. The Hollis Memorial VFW Post 11373 hereby recognizes Principal Richard Barnes in appreciation for his tenure as principal of Hollis Brookline High School, where through personal gesture and administrative policy, he initiated and enriched a welcoming environment for the veterans in the local community. Under his leadership, veterans were regularly invited to participate in both academic and patriotic events at the school and throughout the scholastic year. Thank you, Principal Barnes, and Godspeed.
I think I need a picture on my phone if it's okay.
Did anybody give me a picture? We did take some pictures, but...
You did?
Well, yeah. I don't know if I got... Gina, did you get a decent one? I didn't get one of him looking at the camera, so...
Why don't you get a...
Beth, you got that?
Thank you. Looks good.
And before we depart, I want to say that two weeks ago, we gave a similar citation to Bob Thompson for his role. Look, I know this building. I don't even have kids. I know this building really, really well. That's just a testament to what a great environment this has been for us. So thank you very much also.
Thank you to Bob, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now it's my turn to do a similar type of presentation. So, you know, the board has gotten together, and Cindy has a small recognition gift for both of you as you are leaving our district. I mean, we could be angry, but I also have another gift for each one of you, a little different. So Rick first. First of all, we wanted to take a moment to recognize our New Hampshire 2021 Principal of the Year. We're really proud of you for all that you've done to get there. Congratulations on achieving that. Your tenure at HBHS has been filled with many accomplishments, and it is fitting that as you leave us, you are named Principal of the Year, especially given the year that it was. Just to name a few things that you've managed to achieve, and other members of the board might remember other things. I had to kind of... You reorganized the building to meet NAAS requirements. You transitioned our graduation to a field of blue gowns. You restructured our guidance and student services department to be managed by one assistant principal, which I've heard recently was transformative in the building. This year, your work with our students on DEI and all of your work with our students over the last 11 years.
11 years.
Yeah. You've maintained our building during different projects. We've had a turf field put in during your tenure, and you've worked with our staff to provide the best possible education to our students. There's just so many other things to mention. But I have a gift for you. We have a gift for you that's really more about the last 16 months. Right after the governor ordered our schools to remain remote for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, you sent an email to our students. And in that email, you made a promise to our seniors that HB would not go out without recognizing them. I didn't have a senior at the time, but that message was one of hope. It was one of promise, and it got our kids through the remainder of the school year. You and your team, all of you, you pulled off an in-person graduation where every graduate was recognized at the same ceremony at the same time, and that didn't happen anywhere across the country. So we wanted to remember that moment as you head off to a post-COVID world, a post-HB world. And so we have a little... Can you help me get that out? A little gift for you as you head off. Thank you so much for all that you've done for our students. You truly will be missed, and we want you to look back.
Of course. I'll do my best not to make a mess.
Those are photos from last year's graduation.
Ariel, yeah. Thank you.
You got a picture of that?
I love the Ariel photo, too.
I know you do. I know. You probably already have it, but you don't have it in that format.
No, I do not have it in this frame. This is very nice. Thank you.
And your email is there for you to remember because that email really was striking to me at least, so I remembered it.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. And to our veterans, too. I really appreciate it.
So, moving on. Two goodbyes. This is really not fun, by the way, gentlemen. So for you, Bob, it was challenging to come up with like a photo that would represent your two roles in our district. First, you served as principal, served as our principal at the middle school, and you have so many accomplishments there. Specifically, you made a huge impact on that building and across the state as it relates to creating safe and secure procedures for our buildings. You brought how many kids on trips to DC? You connected our students to our veterans and our seniors. You made incredible contributions in communications by embracing social media. And of course, the crosswalk. Thank God for the crosswalk. Your time leading HBMS nights was significant. And then you moved on to the SAU to become our assistant superintendent of student services. And we know that you were making strides there only to be confronted with the COVID crisis in your first year. Am I right? It was your first year? It feels like you've been there forever. You and your team worked wonders to meet the needs of our students with diverse needs. And you also took the role of a contact tracing machine, and you were the main communicator with DHSS, as far as I know. And we know that this school system stayed open this year because of much of your hard work. So your gift represents your time at HBMS, but also your unique way of dealing with the initial COVID crisis when our school buildings were shut down for four months. I think you can probably tell us how many days to be exact because you and your girls at home made the news by the way that you kept track. So use this gift and think of us. And thank you for all that you've done for our students. Now unfortunately, your gift has not yet arrived.
This will...
It's really unfortunate to you now.
After leading the HBMS nights, you went on to help lead the SAU through the COVID crisis, and you even made the news. So your gift of an inflatable night... For now, we have this photo for you. Lovely. Thank you very much.
The best we could come up with.
And my neighbors are very grateful to be able to share this experience.
And I actually know where you live because I drove by, so when it arrives, I will drop it off at your house.
Absolutely. That is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you both for all that you've done. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So now what do we have to do? We are going to approve the minutes. Moving on. Approving the minutes first, and then we have a public hearing. So I need a motion to approve the minutes from May 19, 2021, with the following amendments. Page eight, line 33, insert "is" between that and "where." Page eight, line 37, delete "do." Page nine, line 22, student should be plural. Page 10, line 34, replace "from" with "from." Page 14, line 40, replace "onset" with "onsite." Page 16, line 5, replace "percentage" with "perception." And page 16, line 44, correct the spelling of "page." Moved by Beth, seconded by Tom. All of us were here. All those in favor? Okay, that's 500. We also need a motion to accept, as presented, the non-public meetings from May 19, 2021. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. I think Tom and Liz were not here, so... Who was it? Beth seconded? Okay. So all those in favor? Three. And two abstentions. All right. Now we need to move on to the public hearing. I need a motion to recess this meeting until the conclusion of the public hearing. Moved by Beth, seconded by Tom. All those in favor? It's 500. And we are in recess at 6:28 PM. And so now we need to open the floor for the public hearing, which is now happening. Open.
Just to give folks some background, tonight we're discussing the Maintenance Expendable Trust, the Special Education Expendable Trust, and the Athletic Expendable Trust. A little background on the Maintenance Expendable Trust. Principals Rick Barnes and Tim Grison identified several needed repairs, improvements for their respective buildings during the budget process. At the FY22 budget hearing, the Hollis Brookline Budget Committee recommended, along with the Hollis Brookline School Board, that the funding source for these particular items to be the Hollis Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust. The requested items were Hollis Brookline High School, a roof section, which is phase four out of 10 phases between the middle school and high school roofs, at a cost of $35,000, and road paving. This will be working towards a widening road around the high school building for $80,000. That means that there was a total requested of $115,000, which was approved for the expendable trust. The current balance of the trust is $140,575. The vote is approved of adding $115,000 to that. From that, we'll subtract $115,000 for the roof and the paving. We have $43,000 being held for the future expense of the middle school elevator that the board approved a couple of years ago. So that will give us an available balance in the Maintenance Trust for FY22 of $97,575. Are there any questions from the board on the Maintenance Trust?
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comment on this public hearing item only. If you have comment on this item, the Maintenance Trust, you can come to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, and we'd like to keep comments to two minutes on this topic. Seeing no public comment, the board... I will close the Maintenance Trust hearing. Are we doing the Athletic Trust, too?
We're doing all three.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. So that is now closed at 6:30 PM, and we will begin to talk about the Special Education Expendable Trust.
The Special Education Expendable Trust, there are no plans right now for the FY22 budget to use those. The current balance in that trust is $205,271. So the ending balance that we anticipate for the end of next year is $205,271. This money was set aside for unexpected expenses. If something was to occur, or somebody was to move into the district unexpectedly, we would come back to the board. We would have a public hearing, and then the board would vote to expend any money from the Special Ed Trust, but we're not anticipating this at that time. So are there any questions on the Special Ed Expendable Trust?
What is the current target for that eventually?
We had talked in agreement with the Budget Committee. I believe it's at $280,000, which is about 50% of one of the most expensive out-of-district placements we could have.
Great. And since this isn't really being... You're not asking to spend money, we don't need public comment because it's not a public hearing. Okay.
The third was the Athletic Expendable Trust. A little background on this. The Athletic Expendable Trust has been funded by parent-paid athletic fees. The total fees collected in one year are sent to the trust in the following year. An annual request in public hearing occurs each year to spend all or part of that allocation. This year's request is for athletic expenses that were assigned to the Athletic Trust via the FY21 budget process, and they are as follows. Field maintenance of $217,18. And that was from FY20, June of FY20. FY21, we had field maintenance of $3,525. We had anticipated to use transportation, but because of the pandemic, those transportation dollars were not utilized because not all our teams were competing. We had budgeted $11,082 for a variety of athletic equipment, of which we spent $9,505, again based on the pandemic, the things were curtailed. Training supplies for our athletic trainer were $4,321, of which we spent $2,964.17. Athletic supplies, we budgeted $2,315 and spent $2,037.22. The awards, $5,110 were allocated. Again, because of the pandemic, we didn't do award ceremonies, so we spent $342.40. Uniforms, we had allocated $18,500 for new uniforms. We spent $15,840.25. Additional equipment that was needed as a result of the pandemic, we had budgeted $3,447, spent $2,688.95. Replacement equipment, we had budgeted $5,275 and spent $4,991.10. The dues and fees to belong to the high school and middle school athletic chapters were budgeted $8,225. We spent $7,125. So we had allocated $67,000 out of the Athletic Trust. Our actual costs from July to May of 2021 were $46,419.9. That leaves us... Our current balance had been $79,011. When we take out the June expenditures from FY20 and the FY21 expenditures, that gives us a balance of $32,375. These fees are now going into the Athletics Revolving Fund, and it will be moved there as we begin the new fiscal year. And again, all these fees and the money remaining is a result of parent contributions to pay for athletics. And I'll take any questions the board may have.
What was the additional amount approved at the annual meeting that will go way on top of this?
Under the revenue and expense report for tonight's meeting, $50,000.
So we'll have a little over $80,000 in the account?
Correct. Well, yes.
And when is it anticipated that we will likely see a request to expend from it next?
I think we're pretty much set for the fall, so you'll probably see Brian here sometime in the October, November time to talk about the winter and the spring.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to open the floor for public comment on the Athletic Trust public hearing only. Same rules apply. Seeing no comment, the public hearing will close at 6:36 PM. Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Public input. So we're aware that there may be members of the public that may want to speak to items that are not on our agenda. I'm going to read our public participation at board meetings policy, which, just to be clear, "The primary purpose of school board meetings is to conduct the business of the board as it relates to school policies, programs, and operations. The board encourages residents to attend board meetings so that they may become acquainted with the operation and programs of the schools. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and public. However, the board reserves the right to meet and to adjourn or recess the meeting at any time. The board also reserves the right to enter a non-public session at any time in accordance with the provisions of RSA 91-A:3. In order to assure that persons who wish to appear before the board may be heard and at the same time it may conduct its meeting properly and efficiently, the board adopts as policy the following procedures and rules pertaining to public participation at board meetings. The first 15 minutes will be set aside for citizens to address the board. This is number one. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the board, and speakers must provide their name and address, and will be allotted three minutes per person. Number two, consistent with RSA 91-A:3 and Policy BEDB and the laws pertaining to student and family privacy rights, the board will not place any matter on the public agenda that is to be properly discussed in a non-public session. Complaints regarding individual employees, personnel, or students will be directed to the superintendent in accordance with Policies KE and KEB. Number three, all speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene, libelous, defamatory, or violent statements will be considered out of order and will not be tolerated. The board chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow this rule of order. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Questions shall be directed to the board chair. Also, in Policy BEDB, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination, additionally, the board reserves the right to limit public discussion at board meetings to agenda items only. So for many years, this board has practiced that we ask the public limit their comments to agenda items only. As a board, we try to stick to the agenda in order to maintain transparency with the public. We don't want the public to be surprised by what is being discussed, so we post our agenda ahead of time per RSA, and the public can expect that we stay focused on the business of the meetings at hand. We generally only make adjustments to the agenda in terms of the order of items, and we rarely add an item, and we do so only if there is an urgency to that item. Thus, we ask that the public respect our precedent and stay focused on agenda items in public comment. We are aware that there are concerns related to curriculum, and we are planning on putting that on our July agenda and would welcome public comment at that point. Tonight, we will be keeping public input to 15 minutes since we have a packed agenda, and we will allow for three minutes per speaker. Input is restricted to Hollis and Brookline residents of voting age. Once recognized, please state your name and address for the record. All questions should be directed to the chair, and please be brief if your point has been made by others. And at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comment at 6:39 PM. Can you do a timer, Tom? We're doing three minutes, though.
Good evening. Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive. You've read the rules. I was trying to keep up with them.
I was fast.
I think a policy, a suggested policy, is a... Or an amendment to a policy, is that something that I could speak about? It sounded like you covered policy in the beginning of your statement.
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. So specifically, I want to talk about amending or potentially amending the academic freedom policy. Over the last few months, we've heard several examples where Hollis Brookline instructors seem to have used their positions to espouse one-sided political viewpoints. As you know, the Hollis Brookline co-op has been an excellent school system. This is most certainly due to the efforts of the school board in determining curriculum and in determining school policy. I'm concerned that the school policies are not always followed carefully by instructors. For that reason, I'm proposing that the school board amend its academic freedom policy, Policy IB. The language that I propose will ensure that instructors have the freedom necessary to effectively teach their assigned subject matter. The policy, however, will encourage instructors to avoid discussions of political, social, or religious values unless they relate to the school board-approved curriculum. Our district had a long discussion about equality, justice, and unity at our annual meeting this year. One of the takeaways that I have heard voiced by our superintendent, and I agree strongly with this position, is that parents do not want the school system or instructors in the school system pushing an ideology on their students, whether or not that ideology is left- or right-leaning. Adopting the proposed academic freedom policy will help ensure that the high-quality education promoted by our school board is delivered to all of our students. Please advise me on what the next steps are in order to have my proposed academic freedom policy taken under consideration by the policy board. I think I emailed it to you, so I don't know what the status of that is. Do you want to...
I can follow up with you. I can't talk about it now, but I can definitely follow up with you offline.
Okay.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
So I just have one more brief comment about the school reopening plan. Our present school schedule includes half-day learning on Fridays. This is essentially robbing our children of 10% of their education. It's not a... It's not acceptable. How can children be expected to compete with others who have received, who have received their full, the entirety of their education? The justification for this was based on the fear of the unknown back in 2020. We now know that COVID-19 is not a risk for children, and a vaccine is available for others. Providing anything less than full five-day school week would be a grave injustice to our students. I'm asking that the school board please stand up and fight for our students and make sure they get the complete education they deserve.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
You timed that beautifully. Good job, Joe. Is there any other public comment? Okay.
I'm Drew Mason, moderator of the district, moderator of Hollis School District, and moderator of the town. I just want to say thank you to the school board and to the SAU staff, SAU administration, school administration, school staff. This has been a really tough year for the schools. It's also been a really tough year for those of us who have to run meetings and elections. We've had six elections, six meetings and four elections, all during this pandemic period, and it has been very helpful. The school system has been very helpful in providing facilities and working with us to provide safe and effective elections and meetings, and I just say thank you. And a special thank you to Superintendent Corey, who has fielded countless emails and phone calls and Zooms from me, dealing with all our various ideas and plans and working things out. The second thing I wanted to mention was that the legislature did pass the bill that will let us maintain the apportionment formula. It is sitting on the governor's desk waiting for signature, and we're hoping that it will be signed, but that will be a step forward. Thank you to Representative McGee for sponsoring it, former Representative Belanger, former Senators Leveque and Gilmore for beating the bushes and helping get it passed.
Thank you, Drew. Thanks so much for coming up and saying that. That's very kind of you.
And especially thank you for sharing good news about the apportionment formula.
Yes, we like good news. Thank you, Drew. Okay.
Hi, Tiffany Testa, 101 Moore Hill Road. I wanted to add on to the thank you because I think being an educator in a school that only came back six weeks ago, I can speak to the authentic value of the unbelievable hard decision-making that you all had to go through. And talk about courageous and brave, I have to say that I was not on board. I was ready to send my kids because I was tired and sick of them, but I didn't know that it was the right decision, and I just went for it. And I am so thankful as a parent to know the bit of normalcy that my children got. And I want to say thank you for the unbelievable, Andy, stress that you went through because there's always those that say nay, and you have stood courageously in all aspects of all the things we've gone through. So, I thank the board. I thank you for beginning to think about continuing the work of DEI and all that our, and SEL, and all that our kids need to be critical thinkers and to be really deep learners because it's a whole package. It's not just about the curriculum, but it's about the relationships, it's about the critical thinking, the culture, and the way that we are going to raise our kids to be good citizens. So, thank you for doing all the work.
Thank you, Tiffany. It'd be easier if you want to speak, if you could rise so I have a sense. Go ahead. Come on over. Can I say 6:39?
Good evening. John Garuba, 30 Meadow Drive, Hollis. I want to talk about COVID policies and reopening. Is now the right time to do that, or?
It's actually on our agenda, right? The new plan, so.
Okay. I'm here to represent my daughters, who, like many of us, have suffered dramatically as a result of COVID. As school is more than just academics, I'm very concerned about both the quality of education and social development available to school, to students this past school year. Given the pandemic, it's understandable, but I want to ensure that we are striving to move forward and make that better in the next school year. I felt in numerous cases, the policies that were implemented this year were less than we would like them to be going forward. So, I want to voice my concern about some of the more troubling policies in an effort to help ensure that we provide students with a pre-pandemic level of education that they deserve next year. The state of emergency has ended. This doesn't mean that COVID has ended. However, planning for future activities should be commensurate with the actual risk as we know it today. Did you know that the COVID death rate for children 14 years and under is one-tenth the death rate due to auto accidents? Children are literally 10 times more likely to die in a car accident on the way to or from school than from COVID. If we treated car accidents the way we treat COVID, we would all be too afraid to drive. Also, did you know that suicide attempts among adolescent girls is up 50% over 2019? That's a factual number from girls admitted to hospitals for injury. It's not an understatement to say that the COVID-related changes in school and social dynamics have resulted in negative mental health and self-harm to our students. Thirdly, the intangible effects on mental health and physical health are more widespread but largely unmeasurable. Our children are missing out on critical social development, which is arguably as important as academics. Given the health risks of COVID versus the negative impacts the COVID policies have had on my children personally, it is clear to me that continuing any COVID-related policies does more harm than good. We must be striving to return to normal. Anything less is an injustice to the students. Here are some of the policies that have caused my children and family severe anxiety and stress. They should not be continued.
You have 30 seconds.
Return to full week of school. Shortened school days and half-Fridays are clearly less education than previous. Full in-person class should be available to all students with a certified in-person, in-classroom teacher. There were many cases where my daughters were in school and the teacher was not, and they were assigned watching you to learn instead of having an in-person teacher. Personally, me standing in as a teacher is not something that I want to be doing for my children. There should be no special considerations as a result going forward. There, let's see. No contract tracing requirement. That was a significant impairment for my children.
We're at three minutes. Thank you so much.
May I yield my two minutes till you finish?
We really don't get into that kind of thing, so we just...
Sounds like it was wrapping up.
Yeah.
It's about wrapping up.
Just quick, quick, quick wrap-up, please.
So, the contract tracing requirement was causing social anxiety for my children. In addition, it helped inhibit them from interacting with other students and were unable to make additional friends from the Brookline community because they literally couldn't get out of their seat and sit and talk to someone new next to them. Right? So, that's hindering their social development.
Okay. I'm going to have to say, that's great. I mean, I have to get finished.
Lastly, COVID, all right, so... So, there are no outside mandates and no outside requirements. The fate of our children is our responsibility as a community. We have the autonomy and the authority to make our own decisions.
Okay. John, I invite you to come back to next month's meeting and finish because we will be talking about this until September, so, thank you.
Are we allowed to do more than one per meeting?
At this point, we only have 15 minutes, and we're already over 15 minutes, so...
I think we're running late.
So... We're not going to take a vote to extend. We're going to finish up with the last two people, and then we're going to be done, so...
My name is Barbara Shove. I live at 18 Maple Knoll Road Drive. I just moved into town six months ago because I heard that Hollis was amazing, and I'm very disappointed. I'm really sad. I spoke to Mr. Corey on Monday. He knows who I am. So, I want to talk about the masks because you guys have apparently reserved the right to re-mask our children upon a whim next fall if you want to. And so, this, my point of view is, the school administration has been protecting rules based on fake and disproven science. Rules are put in place to protect people, not the other way around. My children have been mocked, ridiculed, and shamed for knowing facts simply because it goes against the narrative. The most protective and 95 mask is still only 95% protective or effective. Wearing any cloth or disposable mask is equal to deterring a mosquito with a chain-link fence. Asymptomatic spread has been proven by science yet again to not occur. If children are at school, logically, they are healthy and have no reason to wear a mask. This is medical tyranny. In the last month, we've had a few heat waves. Mr. Corey has informed me that most of SAU 41 classes do not have air conditioning at all. My children were forced to wear masks while trying to make paper fans to relieve suffocating heat. If a student were to pull the mask down under their nose, their passive-aggressive teachers were telling them that she couldn't understand them until they put the mask on properly. This is bullying, abuse, public shaming of seven, eight, and nine-year-old children. For reference, the flu killed 188 children in each of the previous seasons, 2018 and 2019. There's no record of flu illnesses or deaths for 2020 because they renamed the flu as COVID-19. That said, there are a total of 100 children who died from COVID-19 in 2020. Notice, this is less than the flu. Why are we forcing masks on children for a virus that is safer than the flu? While I'm talking about this, when school's out on Friday, and the plan for next year's for masks is optional, because the school board and officials are reserving the right to reinstate the masking whenever they see fit, we cannot allow schools or the board the power to continue abusing our babies. Am I allowed to speak on critical race theory quickly?
No, that's not a topic tonight. And also, I just want to clarify for you, we're the Hollis-Brookline Cooperative School Board, and so, we don't have children in our district that are under 12 years old.
So, where do I go for my district?
That would be to the Hollis Primary School, Hollis, Hollis School District, or to the Brookline School District. We oversee the high school and the middle school. We are part of SAU 41.
Where am I supposed to put this information?
It's on our website, SAU 41. There are three boards.
HPS, HUES, and the co-ops are all listed. So, I've just never heard that this was at the same...
So, we are, we're all part of the SA School Administrative Unit 41, but there are three separate districts, and this school board is elected to oversee...
People are supposed to keep this straight?
Children... Well, we have a hard time keeping it straight as well, so... Thank you.
Exactly. As you said, it has no difference.
Okay.
It can apply to...
I stand for children that I haven't met, including my friends' kids who are in the co-op.
We are listening to what you're saying. That's not what I'm saying. I just, when you brought up children under 12, I wanted to clarify for your information.
Thank you. I'll make sure to come to the right one when I find out when it is.
Thank you. I don't know when it is. It's, is it Hollis School District? Yeah. Right. Okay. Got you. Yeah.
Hi. I'm Sue Conley. I've been a teacher in Hollis School District and HB for 30 years now. Yes.
And you're a resident?
This has been the most incredible year.
And Sue, I need your address.
My address, 59 Dupont Gold Road, Brookline, New Hampshire, for all those years, too. I just want to say it's been an incredible year. I teach in that classroom right down the hall over there, and as I said to my students this morning, I'm coming to say thank you to the kids because I work with 100 kids, including yours, Beth. I'm going to point to you and many of you. I've had your children, too, and they're wonderful. Yes, they have worn masks all year, which I've been actually extremely grateful for. Thank you for all of your efforts, school board members and administration. It has made such a difference for us. The staff worked all year long, and yes, I do agree, there's days we've been out, but I know personally, it's been a struggle. My son has been away in Oregon for eight months, and he had to live with the same things we're living with. Our community has been incredibly supportive, and our end-of-the-year celebration, which we had two weeks ago or a week ago, was amazing. The veterans all came. Everyone was there. The kids were great, and our high school students came back and helped us run an incredible day for our kids. And all's I've heard is positive comments from my students in the classroom, appreciating what a great year we've had in our school district all year long. I think, Ms. Testa, you mentioned, you just went back six weeks ago. We've been here since August, and thank you for letting us be here and remote when we needed to be. Thank you for all your support, and we're going to miss you. Principal Barnes, my son had you as a, as a high school student. Mr. Thompson, you, too. And we're losing our nurse and getting new people on board, which I'm actually really excited. I know some of those names as previous students, so I just want to say thank you so much for all of the efforts you guys have given us this year and your support, and here's to next year being all better.
Thank you very much. Sir, I think we have one more comment. Okay. We're at 15 minutes. I'm going to let this go. Go ahead. One more comment, but this is the last comment of the evening.
My name is John Furlands. I live on Dow Road here in Hollis. And from the previous presentations this evening, you know, it was clear that there is quite a concern about our students' mental health and social adjustment, as we'd heard from several of our previous speakers. And I submit to you that a key part of the maintaining and enhancing the mental health of our students and also not detracting from the education that they need to prepare them for their future lives, that a big detraction and what is really harmful to our students is this promotion of a critical race theory. It is highly divisive. It destroys self-esteem of our young kids who are told that because they are white, they are inherently racist, and this is not helpful to their social development and/or their academics. And this is not something that we can justify as being, you know, mere education. This, folks, is straight-out indoctrination. I have heard presentations before of Chinese people who have suffered through the Great League Forward in China, and the censorship that goes on has been going on, and the people who are on the wrong side of the messages are being bullied. And I see some of the same type of things happening here, where I hear about kids being bullied in the classrooms when they speak against critical race theory. I have heard of media comments being, being censored and not posted, and I would really urge us all to pay more attention to this issue. I can't understand how anybody can be a promoter of critical race theory, knowing how harmful it is to our students, and I would say that they are more concerned with an ideological indoctrination than they are benefiting our kids from an educational fulfillment. I hope that we can address that situation.
You have 30 seconds.
Pardon?
30 seconds.
Okay. And unfortunately, I think it's, has started to become embedded in our school systems. So, this has been going on for a while, and I submit to you also that the enemy is also inside the gates, and I think we have to identify who is supporting critical race theory here in town, and, you know, maybe they qualify for re-education because I don't think a lot of them understand that this is also based on Marxism.
Okay. We are at three minutes. Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay. At this point, we're going to close the floor for public comment and move on to the remainder of our agenda. Rick, I think we turn it over to you. We're at the principals and athletics report.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm going to run through all three reports here as thoroughly as I can with respect to folks' time. As, if you look, starting with the middle school report from Principal Grison, as you notice, they had their end-of-the-year celebration, modified from previous years, but it included a field day, which was pointed out, and was glad to have our students from the high school come down and help out, along with their award ceremony as well. Also, congratulations to Mr. Capero for his nomination for Teacher of the Year. There's a number of teachers that were nominated, and it's nice to see his name among those educators being recognized. Moving on to, do you want me to, am I covering the middle school schedule later, or is it a small part of the same packet information?
It's all in the same packet, but I guess what I would like for you to do is do the reports and then come back to the schedule as after.
Come back to it. That's what I was asking. Moving on to the, I'm going to stop, jump over to the athletic report. We had a phenomenal year at the high school athletically. You know, as has been pointed out tonight, being in school five days a week is kind of, is an honor, and the fact that our kids are so competitive. I think we had more kids in championship events this year, tournament events in the final round than maybe any other year, and came away with a lot of second-place trophies, and we're really proud of our kids' fight. and came away with a lot of second place trophies, and we're really proud of our kids' fight and all of that. And the middle school intramural program was largely successful, and they're looking forward to getting back to normal next year and having sports. And last, but very much not least, the addition of the bleachers was a welcome sight at the high school up on the turf field, and I'm sure it'll be a great place to gather for many, many years to come, so. Moving along to the high school. In your, in there, we were really excited for the, be the first school ever to host the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. Not, I included an attachment, a flyer, that showed some of the programs they offered. Not all of those were available to our students, because we wanted to start small. But that easily, in my eighteen years, was the best career day type presentation that I've seen, based on student participation, and they had a lot of folks that were interactive with the kids, and I, it was a really, a really cool thing to see, and I know that Principal Grisonne is looking at that for next spring as well. It was very popular. And highlighting again our H, our theater program, performing arts, have been phenomenal, working with the lack of performance time and everything else, and just finding really creative ways. And their last premiere, latest premiere of Shrewd Up is no exception. And we, some of you know that we had adventure lore out today, doing a lot of team building activities with our students, which is amazing to watch, it's probably the highlight, one of the highlights of my year, was watching kids just, just play and be kids. And we saw that during physics day, and it was kind of like a throwback almost to elementary school. It was just nice to see at the high school. You know, we don't do a lot of things like that, as you know, and I think that might be a sign of things to come to. Kids were really having a good time, and, you know, it was just really well deserved and a lot of fun to feel that energy coming off the field. And last, congratulations to all student staff and really all of us. We know what the year has been, and it's been incredible, and it's been quite a ride, to say the least, like no other, as they say. And, you know, really proud of our students, we're proud of our team, which includes everybody here in this room, and we really have accomplished something together as a district, middle school, high school athletics, that other people just aren't doing in the way that we're doing it. And, you know, the phrase, "It's been a relatively normal abnormal year," I think is, kind of, kind of fits, kind of fits the bill, so. And I'm really proud to be, you know, leaving on this note, because it's, it's just been remarkable. And thank you to everybody here, I just really appreciate all your support over the years. None of this, none of what we've done is possible without the support all the way up and down, so. That's been tremendous as well, and with a lot of gratitude, I just say thank you, it's been a great year, and we have a lot to be proud of, and people are really excited.
Great, before we go on to the schedule, are there any comments? I just want to say, first of all, just because I like to make sure that we say our congratulations to Mr. Caprero and to the students who have been mentioned as the Project Lead the Way, those accomplishments, the trig star exam, all of the things that are listed. And thank you to all of your staff for getting through, your staff and Tim's staff, for getting us through this year. I also got some many texts about graduation, maybe because I was up there, but many people really, really love our graduation ceremony. I mean, like, in a way that is pretty interesting, like, the speed, it's, it's perfect amount of time. So the planning that has been going on for years, it's like a well-oiled machine, and it really does come off well, and I've gotten lots, I mean, so much feedback on it this year, I think because it was, I think it was like the perfect weather, too, so it was great. So, thank you, it really was, it wasn't hot, it was like the perfect weather.
How you ordered the plane to stop exactly the right moment.
I don't know how you did that, but.
If the sun didn't come out till an hour after you guys left the field, it was perfection.
Well, if he may remember when he said, "Switch your task," I don't know how he did that either, it was just like a nice.
Spending many years with Mr. Corey here, staring at radar.
Yeah, but it was, it was definitely, it was a highlight of a, of like you said, an abnorm, a normally abnormal, what did you call it, a normal abnormal year? It really was a highlight, because it felt very normal, but yet there were some differences, but it was still normal, and it felt good, so.
You didn't sweat out gallons of water?
Thank you all for that, yes, Beth has some comments, because I don't want to do all the talking, so.
Well, no, I don't, I don't have a lot of comments, but I just kind of, it echoes a lot of what you said, but just, you know, because this is with reports here for the schools, just to echo, you know, thank you to our students, our teachers, our parents, it's just, I, it's like, I blinked and somehow it's June eighteenth in a couple of days, and I know it didn't, we didn't get here by accident. It was with lots of, lots of patience and lots of planning and lots of cooperation and.
And pivoting, lots of pivoting.
And lots of pivoting, that's one of my favorite words now this year, and, and I really, I've had the privilege to be in our co-op so much to sub for our nurses and our teachers, and I've learned so much, and I just so appreciate the, you know, the response from staff, students, families, everything. It's been a huge privilege this year for me to be here on the school board and to be helping in our schools, so thank you to everybody.
Thanks so much. So, she's got, Cindy.
I just wanted to make sure that it goes back to the committee, the graduation committee, and the schedule, everybody that helped with the, I mean, like, there's so many things that go into it and being there, and to thank Karen, this was her first year.
Yes.
I can imagine that she, with everything else that was going on, that that had to be very difficult. And to thank all the staff that did the outdoor special for the senior awards. The senior week was, had to be really different this year, and we appreciate everything that they've done for them.
I'll definitely bring that back, I kind of liked outdoors this year, I'm not going to lie, it was.
Oh, the outdoor senior awards? It went very well, it was great, end of their time at HB. And the class of 2020 had an experience as well, so I'm really proud of our schools for that. Okay, now you can talk about the middle school schedule, because you're an expert on it, baby.
What is this?
Have you ever seen it before?
Yes, I have. So you have the schedule, obviously, in your packet, from what my expertise in serving time with Mr. Thompson over the years and talking about what the goals are and the program is at the middle school, I look at those average class sizes and think those look pretty good. That's a, that's a legal term, I would say that's pretty good, looking at, you know, looking at compared to high school sections, and I think there's a lot, a lot less of them, their numbers are a little more uniform. And so I would say it's a fine job. And the, if any questions come up around some of the markers there with the IMP math and the reading Wilson, those are going, are to be hand-scheduled, because they're primarily students with IEPs, so those will be filled. I, I know it's the same, often similar types of situations at the high school. So those, I, like I said, those numbers, those averages look fine, relatively fine to me, given what the goals are of having small class sizes. I'm happy to do my best to answer any question.
Provides a small class, it's easy to have.
Well, it looks like specifically the seventh, the eighth grade class is a smaller group of students.
Yeah, I'm sure that helps.
Pretty small, too.
Is it really a hundred and sixty-six in the eighth grade?
For next year's eighth grade?
Well, that's what it says, well, when it says, like, eighth grade social studies is a hundred and sixty-six students, so I assume that's the class size.
Yes, we do expect many of our homeschoolers to return, and so they're not in that one hundred and sixty-six.
Okay.
And we do have quite a bit in that.
Quite a few homeschoolers, yeah, we're definitely looking at different kinds of numbers, so go ahead, Tom, you had some questions?
Yeah, I was just curious, I'm not sure if anyone present really knows this, but the average is one thing, is it a relatively uniform distribution as well?
It, it is fairly uniform, the times when it's not is when you have a student who is, you know, in the, in the off-team math class, whether it's IMP math, or if it's, you know, grade seven algebra or grade eight geometry, and then you have to force them into, to a schedule based on that singleton, and/or if they choose chorus or band, because that's going to kind of force them into all their other classes. But overall, this year, based on the numbers, they all look pretty good.
And this is, this is based on two teams in eighth grade? Do you see anything on the horizon, the near-term horizon that's going to challenge the two-team model?
No, I mean, I think we're seeing for the, our rising four, rising third graders, seems to be a pretty big bubble in both of our districts. But I, you know, I mean, you know, that, we have a couple of years to kind of plan for that, but it seems to be relatively stable, certainly, two teams can manage what we're seeing, unless we have, you know, strange movements.
We are welcoming our largest kindergartens.
In both districts.
In both districts.
Yeah, that could happen.
Exactly, but I mean, but typically, we tend to add students along the way, because most people aren't, and I'll say, first-time home buyers in Hollis and Brookline. So to have a large kindergarten to start out, most times people don't tend to leave unless it's a company transfer.
Okay, I don't think, are there any other questions on the middle school numbers? All right, thank you very much. At this point, we're going to move on to our discussion, which would be our revenue and expense report. Thank you, Rick, by the way, for that.
You're welcome.
And everything else.
I'd like to give.
I was going to say, I didn't know about when I stepped out.
He did talk to Brian, he did speak to Brian, yes, sorry.
I missed it, I was just curious, are the, is the installation complete now?
The bleachers are installed.
Yeah.
The holdup right now is it's a different crew, because the press box is footings to hold the weight, and then the handicap ramp, but they're a hundred percent usable right now. And Brian is working closely with them, they're waiting for the, the final signed document now that the bleachers are in, on the, from the structural engineer regarding the footing, so it's all ready to go. And I want to thank Brian, it's been endless hours. I also want to commend the company. Getting workers and going from state to state and following all the different rules and regulations across the country for this company has not been easy, but I was, I would say, very excited by the product. And again, for those people at home that don't know, we had purchased a used set of bleachers after much discussion at the board, and in some ways, I would say you would never know when you go stand on them, that they have been used. They're remarkably in great shape, the press box is amazing. So we look forward to having that all been running for our first home game this fall.
And please extend our thanks to whoever it was that helped fund that.
Absolutely, yep.
The other question I have is, do you know what the summer looks like as far as renting out space on the field?
I know Brian has fielded a couple inquiries. We haven't confirmed anything yet, but I think, once we get our own athletic summer program up and running, which is in the process of working with the boosters and our trainer, Mike Thompson, I, I look forward to that moving forward.
I'm just wondering, is it something we want to actively advertise or promote as a, as a opportunity and a revenue stream?
There have been a couple organizations that I would say are more of your upper level, I'll use soccer and those type of activities, that I think would be very interesting for us to entertain a discussion, because they're, they're well-respected, consistent renters, and generate, to me, significant revenue, when I'm talking about significant, it would be, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollars for the district, which would easily cover any field cleanings and, and revenue to offset athletics.
Right, so who would, who would do that, who might reach out, do that reaching out?
I know that we've had a couple parents, because their children play on these type of teams, who have been quieted, and we were basically just told at this point, we were still finishing up the school year and getting through COVID and finishing the bleachers. So I think Brian will be entertaining some of those calls in the coming weeks.
Okay, I, I, I guess I'm.
You're kind of asking us.
Yeah.
I, I, should, should, is that something you want us to put a group together, or is it, is it anything that would? I just, I just don't know that, that the, the resources are not overtaxed within the SAU, and if it's something that you'd like done, I think that there are skilled individuals within the board, with the booster club or things like that, that could actively promote it if it's in the best interests of the district.
I am in contact with the boosters in HB Elevates, so I don't see it as something that will become a, I'll say, an SAU duty. Those organizations are more than willing to assist, but if there are board members that have an interest in, in those areas, if you just emailed me, it'd be great to have different resources.
Okay, thanks.
And we could consider a different structure if it starts to become, you know, like a committee or something, if, if it needs to, but it might be something, it might be something to talk about, but, but let's see how much interest there is.
My guess is after a year or two of it being in existence, it will be, it'll happen, but getting started, I don't know how many organizations realize that all of a sudden there's these groups that could be playing to a schedule.
It's a tough team.
Busted.
Is it the Celtics? Are they all done?
No, checking the news.
So, I do, I do want to say, we took a walk up to the bleachers on Sunday and stood at the top, and there's a really nice view, like, you can see over, I mean, it's such a great spot, so. It was kind of a fun outing for John and I, Sunday afternoon, like, oh, let's go check out the bleachers, so, yeah, it was fun.
I'm glad you asked that, I'm very intrigued by that, too, in the conversation, I just want to see it all done first.
Right.
Signage up and everything, like, first before we, but I think it's definitely worth the conversation, so, yeah.
Be well on, yeah. Okay, so fiscal year 2021 revenue and expense report, that's next, thank you.
Okay, I, I want to publicly thank Linda Sherwood and Kelly Sealy, they're the people behind all these numbers. They work every day tirelessly, and this is a system that they developed a number of years back, and I think it served us very, very well. I'm happy to report that we're projecting a balance of one million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The major pieces of that are cost avoidance and special ed. We didn't offer co-curricular programs across the board, so there were substantial savings there. We didn't have as much professional development, because people were not going out of district, and much of it was offered online. So that's how we arrived at the one million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We did see a slight shortfall in revenue, we overprojected by forty-seven thousand dollars. So when I take the expense balance and I subtract the revenue balance, that gives us an unreserved fund balance of one million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. We are committed, based on the votes of the legislative body at our annual meeting, to the athletic revolving fund of fifty thousand dollars, and the maintenance trust, which we already went over tonight, we'll vote on later on, of a hundred and fifteen thousand. Last year, we did a retained fund balance of a hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Kelly hasn't finalized that, but I, I think it's safe to say, I, I believe she's going to recommend the same amount for this year. So that would mean our total reductions would be three hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, giving us a projected fund balance of one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. And I'd be happy to take any questions on the report or anything about the report before I just jump into the unreserved fund balance.
Just the three, four, five, seven, sixty. Okay, I got it.
Okay.
So now you're going to move on to the unreserved fund balance update?
Correct, so as I just said, we have the unreserved fund balance of one million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-three. At last month's meeting, we talked about some pieces to potentially use that unreserved fund balance for. In the sheet that Kelly provided, we had the main office security renovation, which was recommended by Homeland Security, which would be in next year's budget at ninety-one thousand dollars. That was recommended by the budget committee. What I am recommending is that we give serious consideration to the next phase of the roof, which is our most expensive section, phase five for a hundred and ninety thousand. And I believe last month, as you had asked, the number of phases, it's ten phases. And by this summer, we could be through five and six if we move forward, because we're doing four, we could do five and six, and we would be done, our most, two, our two most expensive phases, would be projected to be done with our roofs by 2025, 26, and then you're probably looking at twenty to twenty-five years before you need to come back to these roofs again. So I think Kelly's CPI plan has worked well for us, considering we started it in 2019. We're also recommending, we got a price to complete the circular drive, so to make it two lanes all the way around the back of the high school, was an additional sixty-five thousand dollars, which would allow us to have that pickup lane, as well as the lane to go into this, what I'll call the upper parking lot, which if you've been there at the end of the school day is. which if you've been there at the end of the school day is, is a nightmare. One group of people is trying to pick up their children, another group is trying to get back there for athletics, and it, it doesn't go well. Also, last month, we talked a little bit about looking at upcoming enrollment increases. The NASDAQ reports and what we're seeing in our elementary schools say that children are on the way. So we are presently working with a, a company in Brookline, who is doing their enrollment projections, as well as their heating, electric, all of those type of upgrades, as well as space upgrades. We actually got our first drawings today, and they'll be presented to the Brookline Board on the 30th this month. They've moved their meeting to the 30th from the 23rd. If we were to allocate $30,000, Kelly has listed what we would get at the bottom of the, the page under the projected scope. Review of existing conditions, assess building and site utilities, develop as-built architectural plans and revit, revit software, develop program of existing and proposed spaces outlining the needs at once, develop possible plans and options, which would include a site plan and the concept floor plans. We'd have multiple meeting to review options, provide meeting notes from each meeting. We would continue to develop and meet to review operations until a preferred option is chosen. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems would be evaluated. Review deferred maintenance items, review code and ADA deficiencies, develop project permit requirements, develop project schedule, and develop a project cost estimate. We believe we can bring kind of the comprehensive framework of where we'll be going. And it kind of aligns well with one of the goals the boards had asked during the evaluation season, which was to make sure we were doing more of the strategic planning. So I think this is a very cost-effective way to start that down the road. Because I do believe we're a few years away, we're seeing some smaller numbers in the middle school, which will mean we'll have a smaller population in the high school. But I do think the numbers are going to swing 24, 25, and I just don't want to be caught with no plans in place to at least go to the voters. Obviously, if the plan is not approved, we would do the best we can with the spaces we have, but I think we should be prepared. So when I look at those items, the Homeland Security recommendation, the major portion of roof, the increased pavement, and the planning piece, I come to $376,000. Now, historically, I'm very conservative, and the board has always asked me to ask for what I need. So tonight, I'm going to ask you for what I need.
Can I just, before you...
Absolutely.
You, you're categorizing that complete circular drive as additional or extra, additional to what?
The $80,000 that we approved today, or we may approve tonight in the maintenance trust.
So it's, it's not, if, is the priority, is it a priority over additional item? I mean, is that a standalone thing that you want regardless of the additional?
The $80,000 which will take me up the back parking lot and start the two lanes. Will get me, I'll say like three quarters of the way around to about the, the, the weight room area. The 65 will take me around the, the next way and bring me back down to the front parking lot.
So it's, it's only from the weight room back to the stop sign?
It, it takes me down to the stop sign, probably almost all the way to the teacher's parking lot, because that's what I'm gonna...
How does it get you two lanes going in? Does it get you two lanes going into, or just going out?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, is in the next phase, so to me, it's almost...
Can you draw me a picture?
Yeah.
Can I draw you a picture?
Yeah, no, I, I'm only half beef, I'm sorry, the two-hour drive out of Boston was more than I can sit. Yeah, actually, I, I think I need a picture, like where does the lane start and then where, what do we add?
Okay, what, what would happen is you'd be going up the right-hand side to the back parking lot. We would take property towards the football field.
Where would the extra lane kick in?
He's just saying that.
Pretty much right when you start to the back parking lot.
Like where that crosswalk is?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't come off of 122.
No, no, so you're going up the regular parking lot, over the bridge. You get to where you can either take a left to be at the front of the high school, or go up the back.
At that point, you add an extra lane sort of where you go to the football field.
Correct, so we're going up and around. Now I'm out back of the auditorium, that would be two lanes, so there'd be a, a lane for pickup, a lane for cars that just are going through, or also a lane for students to exit the parking lot if that's congested with pickup. I get to the weight room area where Officer Bergeron always, almost always parks his car. I take more land towards the softball side of the field.
But, but start there, before you go from there, that, to get from the football field entrance, back to Officer Bergeron's parking spot, saying that's 80 grand, right?
Correct, basically, yes.
And that's, that's...
In the maintenance trust.
That we haven't yet talked about.
Correct.
And then, now the 65 picks up where that stops.
Right, and it takes me down the softball field, extending down past the lacrosse field. And it brings me down to the stop sign there, and then...
Wait, do you take a right turn to go down to 122?
No, I don't think, does it go to the stop sign before the lacrosse field, or the stop sign after?
Well, it'll, and I'm going to keep going, so I'm at the stop sign at the lacrosse field. We have enough property there to take that and, and gain space to go all the way down two lanes. But then it'll become one lane when you approach the bridge again.
But, but it will be two lanes all the way past the dirt parking lot, right?
That's, that's the goal.
The teacher's dirt parking lot.
But you, I just, the only part I don't understand is where you're merging into, because if you go to the, the second stop sign, the stop sign that students would like to get rid of because people don't stop there, you can't merge, you've got on, you know, incoming.
Right, right.
So you'd have two right-hand lanes and then it would merge after two right-hand lanes?
You're gonna have a bottleneck there.
You've got, yeah, that's why I'm wondering if, you know, you end it sooner.
I mean, because the problem is, we don't really have the ability to expand the bridge.
Well, it makes me nervous with teen drivers that they're merging into two lanes to one with people coming at them in the other direction.
Wait, where are people coming from if you're at the stop sign before the bridge, nobody's coming down because that's one way?
No, they're coming up into the school though.
It's gotta merge at some point.
It's still, two lanes are leaving, one's coming in, but what I'm just suggesting is if we have the land and the space there, as you're passing the teacher's lot, the dirt lot, if it merged, I'm just questioning that because there's no incoming traffic, there's nothing else.
So a few years ago, we had a study done to review traffic in Hollis. You should see HPS in the morning.
Oh, I do.
And, and they made recommendations about what this would all look like. So, so folks who do this actually gave us the specific recommendations, and we're just trying to go off of that.
I thought they recommended they'll have a separate exit lane going all the way down.
Do you know, this picture exists someplace?
With lots of arrows. Yeah. We could field trip right now, let's go.
What they recommended was that we seek a second egress off of the property, and that's not in this plan.
See that? I, because of the whole merge thing, I thought we only wanted the two lanes as far as it would go where people are stopped for pickup.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, too.
I, I don't, I don't see the value of two lanes beyond that, like, because you, you could only flow as fast as your bottleneck.
Exactly.
So I only, I only see the benefit in what you're describing of one travel lane.
Except that there is the issue, when you're there at the end of the day, and you have all of the kids coming from the parking lot, and you've got the two lanes of pickup, and you're all merging three lanes into one. Whereas if you had the two lanes there, you'd be, it's like three or four, it's all the parking lot kids. I mean, that's the tricky, you talk about the tricky... No, you wouldn't, because you'd be giving a secondary lane so that you'd have, parking lot kids could go that way, and the two lanes could merge, the two pickup lanes could, could go that way. You're, right now, we have parking lot and really the people in the pickup line, and the people who scooch around the pickup line, and the people who scooch through the parking lot, you have almost four different groups funneling into one spot, that's what's happening now.
And I, and I do think...
It's been a while since you've been there, but trust me.
It's going to be what I'll call retraining. But I do think students, when it comes to driving and parking, adapt pretty quickly. Because Rick has made some changes over the years, and that has gone very well. And I think, you know, this is something that Tim will have to address, so, you know, I hear the concerns. We may need to, to start the merge at the teacher's parking lot, you know?
I'd just like to see, and kind of like to, I mean, we all know I'm the visual learner, but I think that helps to understand and look at that. But that, that's the only concern, I agree with having the two lanes around because of, I, I agree with all of it, that's my, my personal only observation.
Merging down from the stoplight, from, from the stop sign... But the, the stop sign at lacrosse, merging there would, it would loosen the bottleneck a little bit, give a room for like 20 more cars to be in line when they stop them for the buses, if the buses are still going to go there. And then you'd have, you'd have like a ski area merge, like every other.
Well, either, either there or just past the teacher lot, I just don't like the idea of...
Are the buses going to come through the same way?
Yeah, I guess that's for all of you to decide, but one of the things that we experimented with this year was running when we did, and I forget which day it was, but we ran pickup in the front of the building, and we could double park cars there, and that actually worked, if you have somebody at the stop sign. It's a lot of monitoring at the end of the day, but it's not crazy, it's definitely doable with the current staffing. But then you free up some of the pickup that goes in the back, which would alleviate some of the problem.
And the buses may remain right there.
And if the buses, if that's the decision, then the buses remain there.
You need, you need the two lanes all the way down past lacrosse field. Because the really point of the whole thing was if we have an emergency. If you have an ambulance parked somewhere on that back, from the back lobby, down the hill to the lacrosse field, nobody, I mean, they're, they're not going to be able to get there. So I think that possibly, you know, we'll have to look at the study, like Gina Stetson, I remember that study. But I think that possibly merging it past the teacher lot, you know, might make sense. But I, you can't go very far because of the swamp and the bridge zone.
No, I mean, those are all valid concerns, I think they may affect the, the price slightly. But to get us basically to be around the building, that's the price that Kelly and Lance were able to get.
So you had $80,000 in the maintenance, to come out of maintenance trust for the first section, is that what?
That, that was the section that we were doing, what we're asking is this extra 65 would be added to extend that.
Okay.
So the, the 80 gets you to the, the back entrance, basically?
Yes, that's what I would say is correct.
The 65 brings you around the front of the building?
Probably close to the teacher's parking lot, okay?
Okay.
So that, like I said, that, what I've talked about so far is $376,000. I want, I'd like the board to consider the Hollis Brookline Middle School roof for $105,000, because it's not going away, that roof is going to have to be done. I don't know if, you know, costs are going to come down or go up, we're seeing, we're seeing skyrocketing construction costs right now. So they, they may go down, this is a, a current quote, so Kelly has gone out and priced that. We may have to do it, what I would say, next spring, like when school gets out next spring. But having the money allocated would allow us to easily get a contractor in hand. And then the, the last piece that I would recommend is, I would really like the board to consider doing the teacher's dirt parking lot. I think, you know, that's been dirt since I've been here, we've talked about it a number of times. It's, it's something that I think our staff tolerates, but I also look, if we're going to bring the two lanes around, I've got the, I've got the people there, and add again is, is, is $65,000. So everything I'm talking about comes up to $546,000. When I subtract that from the, the balance of $1,548,5363, we're still going to return well over a million dollars to the taxpayers.
I'm having a hard time with the math.
The number that you just said that it all totals up to is different than what's on, what's handed out, what's not in that total?
Right, so what's in my total, Tom, is the, the high school main office security renovations for $91,000.
Yeah.
The high school roof for $190,000.
Yeah.
The extension of the paving for 65.
Yeah.
The $30,000 for the...
So not the tech plan?
No, not the tech plan, I want to just leave that in the budget. And I say that because we have ESR money coming in and different...
Okay, no, I just, it's helping me get the math.
Okay, yeah, I had the math wrong too, because I had that 115 in there.
Okay, the $30,000 from the project scope to look ahead. The middle school roof, because it's up in FY '23, and I'd just like to get that done. And then, I know the dirt parking lot for the teachers was FY '24, but I think, you know, we really should accelerate that. And that's where I come up with 546, which would be...
Not the back lot?
No, not the 296, no.
And not the middle school parking, or paving?
No, I was going to leave those in the budgets, because I, the other thing is, I'm trying to avoid is what I would call a tax spike. Because if I do too much, you know, we move the tax rate down, it's going to go back up at some point. Like at some point, that lack of, you know, intentional aid from the state is going to show up. And it's going to be a big hit. So that, we would be returning, if we did what I recommended, $1,039,363.
Now, can you go back on the, on the bottom of the revenue page?
Yep.
It says you're at 1,585,363.
Correct.
How do you take, what's, how do you, how do you take one one, well, almost a million dollars away from that and still have almost a million dollars?
I'm, but I'm not taking, all these projects add up to a, a million.
And we're not doing the 300, we're not doing 365,000 of, or 465,000?
But you're doing more than five, you're doing more than 600,000.
Four, no, 546,000.
546,000.
91...
190, 65 from the top.
So that's 2, 280, 350, 3380. You're doing your old section of the roof, or not, that 105?
Yes. I'm not doing the windows.
You're not doing the windows?
No, I'm not doing the windows.
And what else are you doing?
Teacher's lot.
Teacher's lot is what I, I'd like to get done.
And, and then, you have to add it, the, the savings that's not in, is that relatively trivial on the one, on the 65?
That's correct, like Kelly said, it would be, if we did all the paving together, it actually doesn't save us anything, it costs us 30 to 40,000 more.
Oh, oh, I thought what you're saying is if you don't do it, there's no saving, okay. So you drop in 300 to 100. Okay, so you, what's your total that you are recommending?
My total is 546.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
The other question I have is, are, do you have quotes in hand for these things, or is this budget?
These are all updated quotes that Kelly and Lance have gotten since our last meeting.
Do you have to go out to bid on that 30,000?
On the 30,000?
The project scope.
It's, it's going to be spent over time, so I don't, it won't, it won't meet the threshold, because we won't bid it all at once.
Okay.
Because like the, the NASDAQ proposals for enrollment will be free, and the...
I, I thought this was 30,000 to that one, one-shot deal to the people doing Brookline, and if it is, we will technically, even if you want, you're still going to have to go out for competitive bid if that's the case.
That's correct, but it, it won't end up being a, a one-shot deal, it'll be over the next 18 months to get various studies at each. Part of it will be Benwell Architects will be looking at, that will work with them before. Part of it will be HVAC and electrical people. So it's more, gives us the flexibility to get the, people are not going to want to give us cost estimates, and, and, you know, for free. They'll, they'll give us plans, but not the cost estimates.
Like that 30 grand is something you feel is relatively firm?
I, I do, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Great, are there any other questions?
I just have one question, I, I guess my first, my comment, a lot of, I'm thankful, a lot of the things that were priorities for me are priorities of what you've listed too. But I just had a question about the tech ed, and I'm sorry if I've misunderstood.
The tech plan?
Tech plan, yes. With the tech plan, I know it was recommended, it was something spoken about last month, but it's okay to push that. I, you know, I know we've used, I, there's so much that goes into tech plans, but what specifically that was for?
Well, that's, I wouldn't say we're pushing it off, because it was scheduled in FY '23.
Okay, yeah.
What's happened between what we proposed the plan and now, is we had a wealth of money come in that could be spent on technology. And we're recollecting all that now and inventorying all that. So I'm not sure we're going to need the magnitude of the 115,000, because I think we're going to own some of that. And then number two, the ESR funds that come in, technology is an easy use, our first goal is going to... Our first goal is going to be reducing any curriculum gaps we see. That's going to be the number one priority. And after that, it'll be technology at the co-op district.
Does this is all COVID-related aid?
Yes.
ESR aid is COVID aid, yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, there is the potential use COVID money for some building projects, but it's very, very difficult. And we're only going, we're not going to see a large portion, we're not going to see the two, three, four, five billion that UC talked about some other districts. Our total right now for the final phase, I think is projected at a hundred and fourteen, something?
I think it's like ninety, but then ESR two and ESR three together is like a hundred and forty thousand.
Right.
Total bias in the computers, but nothing.
So that it's just, it's, it's a, it's a no-brainer for them if you're using it for technology. It's easy to, it's easy to follow the paperwork and follow the trail and all of that. Okay.
No, that's what, that's what I was kind of getting, I wanted to make sure that it was still taken care of and just handled.
It'll definitely be part of the budget, and what we're doing right now is we're collecting every single device.
I see, I noticed that, yeah.
And barcoding them all and doing, just a, a straight-up inventory of all of them and evaluating all of them, so some of them might be damaged.
How, yeah, exactly.
And then what we're going to do, when we go to our beginning budget discussions in July, is identify of this phase three, how much do we still need, because we were able to pre-buy some of it already.
Yeah.
And then, so, so that conversation will evolve over the next couple of months, and you'll hear more.
Sounds good, thank you for the question.
Would there, I asked this before, and I don't know if you got an answer or not, but might there be any significant offsetting savings if we did the windows from energy efficiency?
Well, the, the concern I have about doing the windows is I would like to do the project review of the buildings and everything, because I don't want to go and buy new windows and then the architects say, you should make this a different room and it's a new configuration and new windows.
When will that work be done?
With the potential approval tonight, we would contact, reach out to them and start those discussions.
But, but how long, you said that'd take over a year to complete?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, Liz, sorry.
I have a couple of questions. I, I guess I'm thankful that you, like, added to the list. I, I would still have no problem if we added the back lot at the high school. And I'm going to kind of use the same percentage factor that we talked about last meeting, where Hollis was basically spending seventy-five percent of their unanticipated fund balance, and, you know, we're returning about seventy-five percent of ours. So I, I don't think we need to be apologetic about the money that we've spent, and if we think that we need to take advantage of those funds, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and do it. And that's the item that, on the list, that seems to me like, uh, might be nice to have done. And then I guess my only other comment is this, the, it's, the, I understand the need for an evaluation for future incoming enrollment numbers, but any study that they do that's based upon the previously completed NESDAQ, isn't it already going to, I mean, like, it just, it's like starting with the wrong foundation. Like, so I, I, like, I think we need to do two to fifteen, but number, it can't be based on number one.
Right, but the, the piece that's different about NESDAQ, because we've been in contact with them in Brookline, they're working with us on, well, I'll say, the potential workforce housing in Brookline to kind of, it's very difficult to put a number of students on a development like that. They have more experience. That will also project out to the co-op, because I don't think it's just going to be young families moving in there. I think it'll be attractive housing in a very attractive community with a good school system. So we could see a quick rise in, you know, seventh or eighth graders for families moving in there. So it's a little different study than they typically do, and I've reached out to Art Benton Court, because they'll, they'll take an even deeper look of, you know, how many years do they believe we had, have before this crunch hits us?
Can I just add something? We, we've done, done it before in Brookline, and the neat thing about it is what you get is you get a not, not a, do this at a certain time, you get, when you hit this milestone, this is what you'll need. So if your enroll, when your enrollment reaches this threshold, this is what you need. When your enrollment reaches the next threshold, this is what you need to accommodate it. So it has value and you, and it gives you, if it's, if it's done as I would hope it would be done, it gives you trigger points. So it says, if, if, if you're getting this enrollment in your ele, when you reach this enrollment in your elementary schools, you've got three years to get this capability into your co-op. And it allows you to have a plan in place that you can start the three-year process of getting a bond approval.
You think it's only three years? We've been at it for about.
It takes at least three years usually.
Eight, ten, what, I mean, I don't know, I've been on the board for seven plus and that one failed. So I, I don't know, I, I guess that's my only concern, but if, if you feel more confident than I do about the numbers that are going to be generated from that.
I agree with you, Liz, about the general NESDAQ, but if you're getting them to customize it a little bit more to our needs and, you know, have that conversation with them, then I think you're right. I mean, I think we have to be really careful about those numbers, but where else are we going to get those numbers, so?
I, can they, and will they use our actual enroll, I mean, they, will they use our actual enrollment number? I mean, the good news is, like, we're kind of far down the river.
Yeah, we are.
From, I mean, you know, from the elementary schools, and I understand that some of these developments may cause bumps in, in the co-op.
We tell them what numbers to use. We say, tell us what we need if we're going to have the high school at twelve hundred students. Tell us what we, what we need if we're going to have the co-op at, at two thousand or whatever.
I, it just, it's, I, I think what we're seeing right now is such an unusual growth pattern in the housing market. I mean, there's seven houses being built on my street alone, which is, you know, unheard of, you know, and, and so I just wonder if we're going to have a hard time until those, till that round of construction sort of gets done and the next, and, and those folks move in and the kids show up. And it may be that we get some clarity even come fall, because a lot of those houses are going to be occupied by fall, and some of these workforce housing in Brookline are not going to be, but there's a lot of movement in town right as we speak.
Is there a way to make sure that we reach out also to, I know the towns, like, I know the town of Hollis has expressed at different meetings that we're close to build out. They know what our percentage of available land is. I mean, there's people in there. I mean, can we make sure we have that kind of information as well and give that, provide that to NESDAQ? Because I think that's part of the concern is, you know.
I'm in regular communication with the town, because whenever a development comes in, they're, they're excellent about letting me know. And we actually have given them information, because as you can imagine, one of the concerns in a town like this is water, and we control the water at the Hollis District. So we're in regular communication, because again, how much can the, the Rocky Pond take and, and what is going to be the master plan five, ten years from now if water becomes an issue? So the, the town has been wonderful to work with, their departments are in regular contact, where, you know, we just started the, uh, cutting trees today for the Hollis Primary School project, you know, and the town's been right along for, for that ride, and not from a standpoint of, uh, looking to manage all that, just more of, you know, we're putting in a sprinkler system, so that requires a fifteen-thousand gallon cistern, you know? So working with Chief Town, the State Fire Marshal, so we have a really good relationship, and the same exists in Brookline with TAD. So I feel very comfortable that we can get some accurate data. Is it going to be perfect? No, because I, I agree with you, every time I take a different drive through town, it's a, it's a new house. And I think one of the things with us being open, like, one of the, the speakers tonight, they chose us coming from California for this, for the school system, you know, and there are a lot of people looking to get out of cities and this and that.
She's unhappy though.
Yep.
She went moving.
But at the same time, as I, I've said, I think people are going to look to the fact that we were open, we had a, basically, a normal year. When Bob will go through the reopening plan, we are heading back to normal for next year, you know, pretty much. So I think if, if the board during deliberations can approve those requests, I think we could do a lot. I would say from my point of view, I'd be very happy from where we were seven years ago to where we would be this coming summer, because we'd be in pretty good shape with our capital improvement plans.
It's very interesting.
And we have a very pretty turf field that none of us thought we would have seven years ago.
Correct.
So thank you so much for the update on the unreserved fund balance. At this point, we'll move on unless there's any further questions to the articles of agreement. And I wasn't going to take the lead on that, Tom. I thought you guys in your committee might have some plans on that. We need to, we made a motion a few months ago that we were going to have a meeting to, we would have a, we have to, we would be having a special town meeting, co-op meeting, to approve the changes in the articles of agreement that were recommended by the committee. My understanding is in order to do that, we're going to have to have a public hearing prior to that. And then I would like to see us have some sort of a, either a Zoom or a, but a public forum, I think is the right word to use it, or an information session, so that people are, folks are prepared for that. So we thought tonight we could discuss that. And Tom, I don't know if you have any more to add?
No.
Did I go?
Not really, I'd, I've talked very little of it with, with Liz and haven't had a chance to talk to Beth about it, but what I would envision happening is us putting together a very, a very brief information packet that describes, just outlines the edits that we're looking to do and essentially takes away the fear that we're trying to change the articles agreement, of agreement. And then if you, if the board wants it, we could have some type of information activity, whether it needs to be a two-way or a one-way communication, I don't know, but have that prior to the hearing, whether it be done through mailings or whatever, but, but do a preliminary communication, but then we, we do need to, we would need to schedule fairly soon to, the dates, when I say, pick the date soon, not have it soon. Pick the dates soon to publicize for the actual hearing and the meeting for it.
And we'd have to speak to the town, the co-op moderator, because in order to have a meeting where we have voters, we have to have him on board. So we can't schedule until we've had that conversation, I think.
But I, when, when the agenda went out, I got a couple of questions about what is, what is this? And as soon as I sent out the draft document that had been in our, in our meeting of, of the proposed edits.
Yeah.
There, it, it essentially cloched all the questions. It was, oh, yeah, you know, I, I, they, they had a detailed question about why you changed the numbers for the dates, but there was no worry that, that something, something major is in the works. So if the board is supportive of it, I will work with Beth and Liz to get a, an information packet together. I'm looking from the board, for the board to give us some direction on what type, if any, of information session and for perhaps the July meeting, if we can.
Firm up some dates.
Pick it, pick the dates.
I think it's important that someone from your committee gets in touch with the co-op moderator, just to make sure you have.
That's true, right?
That's true, so that you have some, some dates to, to give to us, to provide. And we also need to make sure that, you know, there's SAU administration available. So those are dates that are important.
For the hearing, I, I think it would make the most sense to piggyback on one of our meetings.
Yes, definitely. So that's how we have to manage the dates on that. And, and if you want feedback, I think an information session via a Zoom meeting, I think with two-way communication where people can ask questions.
And a recorder. Well, she's saying two ways, so you don't.
I know, but would we be in person or?
I, I think that's, I mean, I'm going to let it, so when we did like the STEM Center, not all of us were present. Like, I did the presentation, because I was presenting the STEM Center. When we did the turf field, people, so I don't think all of us need to be present for an information session that's being put on by the committee that's doing this. So I think if, if it's up to, you know, even on, not all of you, even when I did the STEM Center, sometimes I went or someone else went, sometimes, like, we did all different things. So I kind of think of it as that way, like, presenting it like, almost like a, a bond, a special meeting, so.
Are there any restrictions on the use of Zoom for things other than our regular meetings with the end of the emergency?
Yeah.
I will check. I, I don't think so for what I'll call a public type of forum.
An information session.
Information night, but let me check.
Okay. The only, the only thing I'm thinking of is that if we are doing an information session with Zoom, if we have the ability to have people present in public, it, it, it may be. Oh, this is so trivial. I don't know, it's not.
Well, I mean, I know when we did all the other information sessions, we, we did have live streaming, we did have, you know, or we had it recorded, we didn't have it livestreamed, we had them recorded. So I do think it's important to have some function of recordability, so people can watch that.
I think it's super important, that's what I was.
So it has to be able to be recorded, it, it has to, I would think it should be question and answers.
I'm not saying don't Zoom, I just didn't know if, if there should be a, a, a face-to-face component, but.
I don't think so. If, if that, if Andy will look into that and see if we can do it by Zoom, do a public forum and information, right?
Well, it's just a public forum, it's not even a public hearing.
It's not even a public forum, it's an information center.
It's not, I don't. It's not to have a back and forth. I think at least the first time, you just need to do a PowerPoint presentation on what.
You could do that, but in the, when we did the other presentations for, and this isn't for a bond, but when we did the presentations for special meetings or even apportionment stuff, we, we tried to create an environment where people could ask questions. So, but if you don't want to, you can, it's not that crucial.
I mean, I think they should ask questions, but at the hearing. I mean, I don't know.
That's, that's another way to do it, I guess.
Because the problem is, is you get one group on Zoom, the other group's not there, they don't hear it, so then they're asking, you know, more questions or different questions. I think the questions should be at the public hearing where everybody has to hear it.
That's an idea too, that's fine. Where are you going to weigh in, Andy, or?
No, I think, to Tom's point, I think that if we started to look at this in July with maybe a, I would say probably an October date.
Well, we, we said we wanted to have the actual special meeting in September. If we don't, if we don't, if we don't deviate from that, it could just be anytime. It's not going to be a big meeting.
I understand that, I don't care, but if we can't get a date, September's a really tough time for administrators and, you know, so if it has to be like the first week in October, I think we're okay. Like, I think.
Okay, but I just, I think that Drew's availability is going to be the driver.
The big ticket's going to be Drew.
Yep.
So I think once you figure that out with Drew, if you want to do just information and not have questions and answers and save questions and answers for a public hearing, that's fine with me.
We can make that decision in July, when, when we're able to give you some, give you some insight as to how we can present it, and you can say, is it, is it self-explanatory?
Right, okay, sounds like a plan.
Some of it definitely is self-explanatory.
It's not, I know it's not a big deal, I just want to make sure that we at least do our due diligence and have.
We can't assume it's a, it's self-explanatory to everybody, though, that's all, so that's why.
Right.
Well, we're going to give them the explanation, and it's pretty straightforward.
Whether the standalone information.
Right, no, I, I mean.
Right, right.
Can we work with the, the draft article that Jim created?
Yep, okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for July to make a final plan on that.
Okay.
Okay, and then we need an update on the lawsuit.
I just want to let the board know that we filed a motion dismissed on Friday, I believe, with June fourth. The judge took that under advisement, and we have not heard back. Jim will update me as soon as he hears something. And once we hear back and once it is finally settled, I know the board had asked me to, to bring back the cost of that to the board just for informational purposes, and I will do that. We hope to hear something maybe this week.
No comment. And now we need to do the draft school plan for twenty-one. Rick, are we going to let Rick?
We can let Rick go.
Yeah, Rick, we can, we can. Since you won't be joining us for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Best wishes.
But you don't live super far away.
That sounded like.
That sounded like. A little attitude with it.
We will miss you.
He didn't really seem to question or want to stay, he didn't.
Best wishes is kind of like, good luck with that.
Okay, so, as Rick is packing up, we've said our goodbyes, Rick. Maybe I'll pop in and see you before you leave. Bob?
All right. Good luck, Mr. Barnes. It's been fun, my friend. Okay, in your packet, you'll find a draft copy of the SAU 41 Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services. The Department of Education has required all school districts in the state of New Hampshire to submit this plan no later than June 21st.
It's on the very end, sorry.
As a condition of accepting our federal ESSR funds. So, we have been working on this plan diligently. Essentially, the plan has two components. One is it memorializes all of the efforts that the district has made for the 2020-21 school year. So, you'll see in there all of the plans that we presented to you in August are in the plan. And then, the second piece is, you know, forecasting ahead to what our plans will be for the 21-22 school year. And I want to start out by saying that these are preliminary. And decisions that are being made right now are being made on local conditions and the data that we have in terms of COVID-19. Things are looking very positive, but that's obviously something that we're going to keep our, our eye on. You know, just to highlight some of the, you know, things that we're looking to put in place for the 21-22 school year. Masks is a very popular topic. It is our intention to move to a masks optional model as opposed to masks being required. And again, the district will reserve the right, if conditions change, to be able to change that position and make masks required. But at this time, we'll have masks as optional. We're also going to look to relax our social distancing guidelines. This is particularly true for our vaccinated populations of students. Right now, that is students 15 and older. But there's some indication that as early as late August, we'll be vaccinating the age groups of five to 12. Also, there have been some changes that were announced at the last Department of Health and Human Services meetings in regard to contact tracing. It's the intention of Health and Human Services to continue to contact trace. However, right now, we operate under essentially a mandatory quarantine. That mandatory quarantine will end. And moving forward, the decisions around quarantine will be based upon the clinical judgment of the nurses. And really, what that means is the district is not under obligation to have students quarantined. It will basically be done through an assessment by the nurse. And we have relied on a lot of their clinical judgment this year and will continue to do so next year as well. So, essentially, the goal is to move to our, to pre-COVID operations. And there's still a lot of work to done, to be done when it comes to responding to the pandemic. But really, the focus is on going to be ensuring that we're addressing instructional gaps. And as speakers indicated tonight, also ensuring that we're meeting the social, emotional well-being of, of all of our students. And again, it is mid-June and plans can change based upon the direction that the data goes. And, you know, the one thing about submitting the plan on June 21st is the Department of Education has indicated to us that we, we can make any changes that we need to after that date. This plan will be made available online and again, it'll be subject to change. And I'll entertain any questions that folks might have.
You can go first, I have some too, but I have to formulate.
When you say masks are optional, I, I see in here that parents have the option of requesting. Will any school employee or district employees have the option of requiring masks?
Requiring them?
Like, in a class, I think you're asking, like, my classroom, I'm saying I need, like, can I ask students?
It's optional, can a, can a, a teacher or some other person of authority say masks are going to be required for this activity or in this location?
Decisions regarding the safer turn plan, including masks, will, will be made at the SAU level. So, the short answer to your question is a classroom teacher will not be able to make that determination.
Okay.
Well, on that same note, I have, I have a lot of questions. On that same note, with the masks, I'm just curious, you know, I'm a parent right now that feels comfortable with this plan in terms of the masks. If I had a choice right now, my children would not be wearing a mask at school. At this point, things can change and that might change. But is there, I don't think we really have to worry about as much in the co-op. But if a student is expected, a parent wants a student to wear a mask, you know, we have no, you know, they come into the school and take it off, they come on the bus and take it off. So, it has to be, you know, it's a risk that people need to understand that we're not going to be, just like we're saying, okay, a teacher can't say, put a mask back on. We can't tell a student either, I, I would presume, I mean, it's.
Like, our kids, like, parents aren't going to be able to say.
Parents aren't going to be able, like, there's no authority that we have.
Just the same way that we have to hope our kids don't leave in a shirt that comes up to here and they're going to wear that for the rest of the day.
That's wishful thinking.
All we can ensure is that they don't wear it out the door. And that, and when they come home, they're not wearing it.
Exactly, it's no difference.
That's all we can do as a school, and that's all we, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's all we can expect you to do.
The ability to monitor and police that is very difficult and challenging, even just using the example of the, the lunch, the lunchroom where you may have 200 students and not every monitor is going to know whether or not a mask is required, so.
Sure.
Reasonable, reasonable effort will be made at the, at the classroom level.
Sure, sure. And the same way that the child is never allowed to have Cheetos, steals them from their friend's lunch bag, is also not.
Eat three ice creams at lunch, I don't, you know, I don't know what to tell you.
Every single day, and she bags of Doritos.
Do our best, do our best.
Exactly, and I think, and I'm glad Liz made the comment she did about the, because that, that was kind of, it wasn't really a question, it was more a comment, just to throw that out there because I think it's important to know that. But it's, it's no different than, I, you know, my kid's wearing a hoodie to school and I don't notice the shirt underneath, I mean, it's the same thing, and you can't control that, you can't police that. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
And as long as, and, and I don't, I mean, I would hope that that's just communicated to the parents that, like, you know, those values have to be instilled at home, as so many values have to be instilled at home.
Right.
We've got, you know, 1,200 kids and we can, you know, enforce policies, but not everybody's individual household values.
So, in a nutshell, it's parents' option, it's optional masks. Kids are allowed to wear masks if they choose to wear masks, but they will not be required to wear a mask at this point in this juncture. And adults in the building can't require students to wear masks. So, we're allowing them. Because two years ago, if a student had walked into your classroom with a mask on, you would have said, take it off. So, students are now allowed to wear masks if they so choose.
Right, and that's, that's.
And their parents can, can make that determination, but that's between parent and child.
Right, and we're asking that the.
Let's be clear, yeah, face mask, not a Halloween mask.
Yes, exactly. Well, and we're, and we're asking too, like Holly said, on the flip side of it is we're going to honor and respect if a kid comes in with a mask, we're going to honor and respect that. And I, I'm hoping that that's the tolerance all around, but, but not that we can police up, like, hey Johnny, you're supposed to have a mask on, mom said so, okay.
Your next question?
My next question? Well, you had said, Bob, about the social distancing and I wanted to understand that a little bit better because classroom space and having students in the classroom has been greatly impacted by that, by size of the classroom, and what you meant by changing the social distancing. And you did make a comment about specifically 15 and up. Right now, 12 and up vaccines are available. And in our state of New Hampshire, they are so readily available that I have to kind of assume that if someone 12 and up wants one, they have access to it right now and that by September, when we open, 12 and up will have access to it. Whether students choose to get it or not, that's a personal family decision that I respect and will always support. But if you're saying you're loosening the social distancing, that's why I was, you know, when you say 15 and up, I assume high school, but I was curious what you mean by that.
And actually, I meant, I meant 12 and up.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. So, that, and then what that really looks like in a classroom. And when you said for, like, because they're predominant, not because, we're not singling people out and saying you're vaccinated and you're not, we're simply saying that it's available. Just want to make sure it's happened in our state a little bit, so I just want to make sure. Yeah, I can show you who's starting.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, a key element of this plan is where we will always evaluate the recommendations by the Department of Health and Human Services. And we are looking for their guidance when it comes to social distancing, specifically for groups of students that are not eligible to receive the vaccine. So, we're really talking about our elementary age students.
Okay, it makes it a little easier in the co-op because again, I think we need to assume that the parents that want this for their children will have access to it and the parents that don't are going to pass. And that leaves, I'll just leave on my last, it's a little bit more of a comment. Maybe you can tell me if I'm wrong on this. But you said that we're looking for their guidance. And I think that's fundamentally the only sticking point I have or I've struggled with at all this year or with future plans is that it's exactly that, it's guidance, it's not mandated. And you kind of alluded to nurses, you know, our campus-level nurses having more say-so, being able to use, you know, what's in front of them, you know, their, their background, their education and understanding our student population and what's going on here instead of being told what to do. And I'm thrilled for that, that they'll have more autonomy to make those decisions. I'm just a little concerned, and I'll just say that that's a concern for me is it's guidance. And I so appreciate the guidance from CDC, from, you know, World Health Organization, from DHHS. And I've obviously spent a lot of time working with them, but it's guidance. And it, it doesn't always fit into ours, so I would hope that we just kind of keep that in mind, that it's, it's a recommendation, it's not always, you know, it's not a law, it's not a mandate.
Absolutely. And what we have seen too, over the course of this year, is we've relied more and more on the clinical judgment of our nurses. And I'll give you one really good example. We've had a really bad allergy season.
Absolutely.
And if we were to follow our guidelines exactly, any of those students that exhibited symptoms that are most likely allergies would have been sent into quarantine. We relied on the clinical judgment of our nurses to make that determination. And the data would indicate, because knock on wood, we have not had a lot of cases and we've had very, very few issues with quarantine or exposure. Relying on the clinical judgment of the nurses during allergy season really paid off for us. We did not have a lot of students sent out, we didn't have a lot of kids in quarantine, and we don't have the COVID data to support that. So, relying on the clinical judgment of our nurses is the way to go. And I think Health and Human Services, their tone has changed. And I think that they're in agreement with that as well.
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there because that's been the only frustration. But I do agree that it's been a changing tone and I hope that it stays that way because it, like, I'm not dissing any of their background, I'm just saying, like, we, we're the ones here, we're the ones doing the tracing, we're the ones.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Tom has some questions.
If it's in here, I didn't see where it is, but what are the expectations for staff at the next school year? Are they expected to be present for classes? And if so, what, I, I thought I heard something previously, I don't, not in this presentation, but that if, if parents wanted their students to remain remote next school year, that option may be, may be available to them? Is that, is that the case? And if so, who, how would they be getting their education remote?
I'll answer the faculty piece. We notified all faculty when we issued contracts that we expect to be in person and that supervision is an essential part of the job. And to my knowledge, we're not having any difficulty with that. At this point, I would say that I, I don't expect us to be offering remote learning.
Oh, okay.
We will have some select students because of their medical conditions that may qualify for it. And just like we would during any school year, we will accommodate that request under their 504.
But it won't be the, the sort of room and zoom thing that we've been doing this year?
It will not.
Okay.
We intend to bring all our furniture back in and get rid of our pods for the furniture. We don't intend to have half-days on Fridays. We do have some discussions going on between staff and the SAU regarding what I'll call the educational gaps. And Gina is going to get some quality information next week from all our staff across the district. We may come back to the boards across the SAU and suggest like one or two Fridays during the, you know, second half of the year where we do do a half a day to coordinate that curriculum piece, just to make sure we're on target. And we are returning to the traditional high school schedule. As you know, we made some changes this year with cab block and moving that and different things. We're back to the traditional setting.
Back to 2019 schedule?
Correct. So, you know, what we want to do is, Bob will, you continue to work with me on this until he moves on, which is happening way too quickly.
And it's, it's eerily similar to the Hampstead plan and actually several others throughout the southern region.
There's quite a few people that have a similar plan. It's amazing how that works.
Plagiarism going on, I see.
Yeah, not on our, not on our end.
It would, it would not pass Turn It In.
But this would be one of the first times that I'm actually the one not getting in trouble for Turn It In. Most times, it was me that was borrowing, you know.
Who's going to be picking up the role when Bob moves on?
Well, we will, we have already started meeting Kelly, Amy, Gina, Lauren and I to kind of review those roles because there'll be some changes. And what we do is we always just try to play to our strengths. So, that'll become more known.
So Gina does it all?
And then, we'll be in Brookline on the 30th to review the plan again. The Hollis Board will be having a July meeting, we haven't set the date yet. We'll submit it to the state. And then, we'll kind of get to August and hopefully, if nothing's changed, be able to finalize this and do some communications with families.
I have one other question that came up off of what Tom had asked. I understand we have no intention to have any kind of formal remote like we have now. But in September, when Johnny gets COVID and quarantine, what, from my understanding, is not going to be mandated, but it's going to be based on, you know, what we know. And what we know is if Johnny comes to school with COVID, he's going to spread it and we'll have bigger problems. So, he's out for 10 days, you know, how are we accommodating? Because I, I do anticipate that being a thing, like, COVID's not going away, like, the flu never goes away. So, we're going to have those and Johnny has brothers and sisters. And so, I'm just curious what that looks like. I'm very thankful that it's not mandated quarantine, but I want to see what it looks like to make sure we're being safe, like, and, and providing not just safety, but education.
So, I would just say that, so this document that, that Bob presented was a template that we were required to do for a certain, and then we had a spreadsheet that was a template. So, it, we answered the questions that were asked, but all of those questions are ones that we're in discussion with as an SAU leadership team. And the nuances of them and, and with our, with our teachers as well. But absolutely, we're going to plan for all of those. You know, we didn't go from a 74-page reopening plan to this, you know, four or five page, or, and think that everything would be solved. So, there's certainly many more details.
But just to piggyback on that, I mean, right now, this year, the kids have used Google Classrooms to really keep up with their work. And even when they couldn't zoom in, they were able to sort of participate in a lot of the lessons that were going on. So, I'm not, I'm not solving the problem because that's your job. But I would assume that these new skills and these new, the, I mean, all the teachers are using Google Classrooms the same way and you did all of that training on Google Classrooms, that's not gone. So, it's just not the same as zooming into a class. But if you're out for 10 days, you can keep, it's not like when we were kids and like Mary Ann from down the road would bring you your homework in a bag.
We've always had, I mean, this is not the only illness that kids are out for extended periods of time. And we had mono in the high school and the flu and lots of other.
And there is an indication that Health and Human Services is going to make some changes to their guidance, again, using the word guidance, around the 10-day.
So, not maybe 10 days, like, maybe seven.
Because what we're talking about is the exposure quarantine. We did away with the travel quarantine. We did away with the 10-plus-10 quarantine. And so, I, the, the language that I heard in their last meeting, it was non-committal, but it had indicated that they were moving away from the 10-day quarantine. It could be a moot issue by the time September rolls out.
It could be like a test after so many days, kind of.
Yeah. And the state is also rolling out a program called Safer at Schools and where they'll provide, in some cases, onsite testing, but if not, the readily available ability for a student to get tested pretty much in a very quick amount of time so that they could get back to school right away.
Well, I think the testing is just a lot more available. And I mean, I think the question that I was going to have about next year, I think, is that you really sort of answered this. This is not the whole full plan, this is just whatever TOE we needed. Are we going to, we anticipate that we're going to be able to resume, you know, band and chorus and our, you know, activi, our, our completely dangerous activities in both the middle school and the high school?
I, we absolutely do. The, the question that we're still kind of going over, we have learned some things about remote learning that may assist us. And I'll give you an example. If a staff member were to break an arm or a leg and not be able to come into the building for commuting purposes, sometimes in difficult areas, it's very difficult to find a qualified individual. So, there might be a benefit for us to offer that staff member the ability while they're recuperating to zoom in and provide the sub. Because from an expense point of view, it's the same expense I would have of getting the sub anyways. So, it's more looking at it from a curriculum standpoint that we won't necessarily lose quality time. So, we have a lot of different questions about what do we keep, how do we keep it at some point, especially at the co-op. You know, we've talked about necessarily not wanting. You know, we've talked about necessarily not wanting to have small classes and we have conflicts. You know, could Zoom be our district and another district pairing up to go from four kids in an AP class to eight or 12 kids? You know, and everybody knows before you sign up, it's going to be online. And maybe it's once a week and one week you go to one school, the next week it's at the other school. So there are some pieces that we see that we don't want to just throw out. And we definitely don't want to lose many of the skills that our students have acquired. Because more and more, your college environment is, you know, some sort of blackboard-type environment for all your work, even if you are 100% face-to-face. So we have a long way to go. But to Bob's point and to Gina's point, we needed to file this document to get the ESR funding. But our ultimate plan will look more like the 74-page document that we have.
And the 74-page document was pretty uniform for the two districts, for the three districts, sorry. But given the circumstances surrounding the vaccine, we are in a complete, we are in a very different place being the co-op school board and overseeing 12 and up, or 13 and up. Because almost all of our students are eligible. Whether or not they're all medically able to, whether they're all going to is not the point. They're all eligible. So it puts us in a little bit different place. And so I hope the plan will, of course, address that.
Absolutely. And I think some of that will just be a wait and see when, you know, when will the vaccine become available for younger students? It could be soon, then, you know, we think.
Say a little prayer.
We just don't know.
Okay, any other questions on that? Thank you very much. So we are now up to deliberations and it is 8:24. Okay, um, hold on one second, sorry, I need to grab my. So we need to see what action the board will take regarding policy JLF, reporting of child abuse and neglect. This is our second reading. Can I just pull it up in front of me? Hold on one second. So I will need a motion to amend JLF, reporting of child abuse and neglect. I don't think we need to amend it in its entirety. I think we just amend as presented. And except for second reading.
JLF? Because it just says LF on there.
It's an error on there, it got cut off, sorry.
That's probably my printer that was originally, JLF, yes, sorry.
When you copy and paste it, it talks.
Yeah, it's always a pain. JLF, yes, I need a motion that was moved by Beth, seconded by Tom. Do you want me to present this, Gina? Are you good?
Whatever you want.
So we looked at this again in second reading.
Was the underline added?
The underline was added because what we were saying is that originally we had that that a employee of the district or volunteer or contracted service presider should immediately report this to the administration, who will immediately report it to DCYF. And what we realized is that the person, the employee, is a mandated reporter. And so they have to make sure that that gets reported. It's their responsibility to make sure that it gets reported. But in practice, most of our employees like to do it with an administrator present. So we wanted to make sure that they did it and made sure it happened. But we also wanted them to know that they could do it with a school administrator. Because in practice, they generally do. So we reworked the language because it shouldn't be, I'm in the hallway and I run to you, run into Principal Thompson and I say, oh, by the way, I had this thing happen and can you report it for me? Because you don't know if he's going to actually do it. So it's, that's how we changed the language. And then we took out the oral report because we were being redundant. Is that right? Did I do that right?
No, that's right. And so basically, we just went back to the duty to report and kind of pulled language straight from there, thinking that if that's the law, then go with the language as such. And then our addition was just the report may be completed in collaboration with the school administration.
Is that, the report that may be completed in collaboration, is that the original immediate report or the written report to follow?
The immediate report. Which is the topic of that paragraph.
Well, both of them are in that paragraph.
Yeah, that's true.
And, and there's a.
No, I think that's the report that goes to DCYF.
There's a grammar issue in the first part. If the immediate report by telephone or otherwise may be completed is not necessarily, it doesn't seem like a correct verb. Because completing to me sounds like it's referring to something new.
The completion, okay. So you could say maybe, may proceed in collaboration with the school administration? So you want us to look at the word completed?
How about made?
Made, sure, fine.
Or initiated? You're not saying.
Is the idea that they can essentially delegate that to an administrator?
They cannot, legally, they cannot.
So what can they, what can they do?
They must report and we didn't want that.
Well, what, no, what can the administrator do?
Sit next to them and put it on speakerphone and have the conversation together. And sit down next to them and walk them through typing up the report.
And that is.
Then I would say the reporting may include a member of school administration, but.
I think that actually makes it even more discombobulating.
So how about this? We don't have to wordsmith it here. We can take it back to policy. We see, we hear what you're saying. This actually isn't a necessary piece in some ways, and so we can talk about that. But the reason we have it in there is because the principals regularly send a procedural update to their employees. And that is part of what they kind of promised them, I would say, is that they will sit with them if it happens in the building. So.
Well, maybe that doesn't necessarily need to be there at all. As long as it's in the staff manual so that they understand.
That's fine, we can take it out of here. So we can talk about it more in policy. Can we make a note in policy to just make sure and see what we decide? The policy committee may decide to keep it in and we'll just make it a little bit clearer. Or maybe it won't get a unanimous approval.
I think to have this discussion, it would be helpful to see what's in the staff.
Okay, I'll bring it up.
We did look at that when we were, when we were in the policy committee meeting.
Not last?
You left. After you left.
I left at the same time, so I'm not sure.
We did.
But we can look at it together.
We looked at an email from Rick that he sends out to his staff, so.
That's different than it being in, I saw the email, but that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for what's in their manual. Because they have a manual, because.
Okay, so we'll do that.
That's their bible. Just like the student handbook is the student's bible, the staff handbook is their bible.
So we can do that in policy then?
And then there's the earlier part, it said, the report by telephone or otherwise.
That's straight from the RSA. That's straight from the RSA.
It may be, but it. Does it, the language before, is that straight from the RSA also?
Gina pulled it, right?
So, so basically, it says that we expanded the definition, and we did this in the first reading, of district employees designated volunteers, contracted service. So I don't know exactly what it said, but it said, "All something having reason to suspect that a child has been abused or neglected shall immediately report by telephone or otherwise." So we just added more people in our first reading.
But the "and followed" within.
Yeah, no, that's straight from the RSA.
But it does, because immediately report, it's grammatically wrong to have report and followed.
Okay.
Somebody tell me, somebody pay attention to the word.
Right. So we'll look at that, try to make it more grammatically correct, but keep it within meaning of the RSA. Is somebody making notes on that?
I am.
Okay, great.
I started, but I saw Gina and I was like, you know what?
Gina's got the notes, so we can change that. And the minutes will reflect this conversation.
Because you can do anything you want to with that policy next time, Gina, because I won't be at that meeting.
Okay.
I don't think you will be either, the next policy meeting.
Get the tense right.
Okay.
Okay, noted.
Okay, so can we say we approve for second reading? All those in favor? That's 5-0-0. Okay, next item on the deliberation agenda. The unreserved fund balance. Okay, so before we make the motion, let me see how people are feeling about the number. Because I think we just need the motion to have a number, right? So the number, which I wrote down, is, I think, $546,000. And it covers the cost of, hold on, I wrote it so I could, covers the cost of, can I just say it like this? The Homeland Security piece for $91,000. The $190,000 for the Hollis Brookline High School roof. The $65,000 for the Hollis Brookline High School part of the paving. $30,000 for Project Scope, I wrote that down as the enrollment thing. $65,000 for the HBHS teacher's lot and $105,000 for the HBMS roof. Did I have all that? So I need a motion to encumber an amount, not to exceed.
It's down underneath, the additional expenses, about halfway down the 105.
Okay, so I need a motion for, to not, to encumber an amount not to exceed $546,000 to cover the cost of the things that I just laid out, moved by Beth, seconded by Cindy. Okay, is there any discussion?
You don't need to include the retained amount of the $187.60 as well?
Do we decide that after the auditors come?
Yeah, we will know, we just know, we can only say what we're spending because that other, that retained amount might fluctuate.
That will change. And typically, what happens is we come back to you usually sometime in August after the auditors have closed the books.
Okay, so until that number is solidified, that 1585363 minus.
546.
Minus 546, still has the $187.60 in it?
That's correct.
So that gets added, okay. So if someone looks at it before that number gets added in, it's a bigger number.
That's correct, you're right.
Okay, so is there any discussion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the number to 842,000 because that adds in the paving for the back high school lot.
How much was the paving, Liz?
$296.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to amend it to eight, what did you say?
842.
42,000.
Gina should probably check that.
Is there a second? Well, I'll second it.
So we can discuss it, exactly.
Seconded for discussion, so seconded by Cindy for discussion. Can we discuss the proposed amendment to raise this by $296,000 to pave the back lot?
First of all, do you, does the 296, the, oh, okay, I confused the line.
I confused you?
No, no, the line, I thought the 296 was in the summary line.
Yeah, it was a little confusing when I looked at it too. Okay, so discussion, Cindy?
So I remember last meeting, we had this discussion on whether we could rip up that whole back and do it all at one time and still be able to function. Because we don't know when this is going to be done or when it's going to be available. So for that reason, and because it's already in the following year budgets, I think I'm going to have to vote against that for now. And the current, we don't have the current invoice, really. She didn't, she didn't check on that, right? Kelly didn't?
No, I think, I think that's pretty close to accurate, but I wouldn't be able to say that piece. And I, just to Cindy's point, having discussions with the boost and everything and how much we intend to use the turf field this summer for athletic training and things, we may unintentionally create a problem where we have limited access to almost the high school because there'll be so much paving.
For me, I'd like to return $1 million to the taxpayers, as much as I really do love to spend money. But I really, I feel like we had, I feel like we had a very strange year with, you know, monies that didn't come in. And I would like to return about a million, and that puts it too close. And you know me, I'm always like, spend, spend, but.
I mean, part of me is I'm concerned about spending roughly $100,000 to add a lane to go all the way around. And then we're going to go pave up to that lane, basically, at some future date, potentially, you know, causing.
They do that anyway, even if they do it all at the same time. That's how they, that's how they do it.
If you think of the back parking lot, there is, it's not a sidewalk, but it's a little bit of a petition that goes through most of it. And that's going to be your natural stopping point, kind of working back to do the back parking lot or do, to do the circular drive. I don't see that. So I think you have that natural piece there where it's always going to be, to Tom's point, segmented.
Well, I don't know, I feel that no matter whether we do it this summer, next summer, some other summer, it's always going to, paving that large of a lot is always going to have an impact.
Absolutely.
And it would just like to, it's one of those things that's been needed to be done for a while. It was part of the orig, you know, fixing that lot was part of the original plan for the turf field. And that, you know, got shifted as well. So it's sort of been something that's been on the table and then just keeps getting taken off the table.
It's a good point.
So, I mean, we are really two years past when it was supposed to have been done originally.
Will it be done in, is it for the next year, is it on next year's budget cycle?
It's actually 2025. And the piece would be to just address that. If you have done the circular drive, at least you could come up, drop off your student at the softball field and they could have access to the turf field over, what I'll call a safe.
Have a lane maybe functioning or breaking up to the second.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I think with proper planning, we could make it accessible. Because, you know, I don't think any of us want to shut down the back parking lot for a summer.
Well, it doesn't even have to be done this summer, right? If we encumber the money now, we could do it next June after the kids get out of school.
That's correct.
So it's not, I mean, one, it's kind of a false argument that we have to do it all at the same time.
That's correct, yeah. It's the same argument with the roofs. We'll probably do one roof this summer and one roof late in June. It's just more the auditors want to know the intent of the board was to spend the money for this purpose.
I still, it just still comes down to money for me. And I, you know, like Holly said, it's returning, you know, money to taxpayers. And I know I already used the word pivot, so I can use the unprecedented word and just say, it's, I mean, this has been a hard year for some of us, but it's been incredibly hard for other people. And, you know, these projects are all important, but I think that they've been kind of prioritized really, really well at this point. And there's some I'd rather see wait, and that's one of them. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I can't support that right now.
Anything from Mr. Solon?
All right, so we need a vote on the amendment? All those in favor? One, all those opposed?
Four.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion. Thank you though, Liz, I always appreciate a good try. The original motion is to encumber $546,000.
Trying to get it paid for about six years now.
Believe I, believe I.
I thought I was ready to do it myself.
A motion to.
I'm going for that.
$546,000 to cover the cost of the things that I said five minutes ago. So is there any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0, okay. So now we have, to see what action the board will take regarding the administrative recommendation for the Hollis Brookline Maintenance Expendable Fund, Trust Fund. So I need a motion to approve the expenditures from the Hollis Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund in the total amount of $115,000 as outlined in the public hearing. Moved by Beth. You need a second? Seconded by Cindy. Is there any discussion on this one? I feel like there's some discussion coming.
I am not opposed to spending the money. I'm opposed to coming out of the trust in the same year you put it in. If you knew you wanted to spend it this year, I think it should have been budgeted. I think this is creating a bad precedent for using that trust as a way to, to change the budget. So I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to this mechanism.
Anyone else?
Are these, this wasn't something when we talked about the budget that we felt like there was a urgent need at that time either? A year over a year ago, right?
No, I don't think it was that. I think we hit, we tried to balance the overall budget impact because of the pandemic. And the last few years prior to this, we had been approving maintenance trusts with kind of what I'll say, a steady income flow to actually build it up. And this year, the budget committee. to actually build it up. And this year, the budget committee felt strongly to just fund it at what we need because again, not wanting to go to the taxpayers too, too much.
So I, I'm going to vote for it, but I would love to see, um, that feedback of Tom's get given to the budget committee, because I think that, I, I'll vote for it because it feels like it needs to be done, but I do hear his concern. And I'd like the budget committee to hear that concern as well. So all those in favor, anybody else, Liz? I'm sorry, I feel like you have a, you have a perk, I, I see the perk.
Well, the problem is if we don't approve it at this point, we're going to pave the second part of the back instead of the front. And I guess we don't have to bind Andy to that. He can spend his money however he chooses and pave, which, put the second lane wherever he wants. Do you think you can handle the front then?
Let us start with the back lot, those curbs are difficult.
That's a big one. Oh, okay, true, true.
So can we take the vote, Liz? All those in favor? Four. Opposed, one. Okay. And that comment, we'll get back to the budget committee. Thank you. Okay, now we need to see, okay, well, this one is a no brainer, if we approve this, I'll be. Okay.
Well, and I think part of, so, I mean, I think part of it is to, like, I think, for me, the comment that probably needs to come out is you, you can't be focused entirely on returning money to the taxpayers. I mean, it just, to me, this, the way this whole thing went, like, we fund the maintenance and then we spend it immediately, and then, because we want to be able to go and say we return more money to the taxpayers, it all comes out of the same budget.
Absolutely.
And so this is kind of just like playing that shell game, and I don't like that part. And I will agree with Tom on that, unfortunately.
I feel the same way.
The way we took the vote in here, I think we're stuck with it.
I feel similarly, and I, I don't, normally I'm not, this whole return the money to the taxpayer, I just feel like this year, there were some, some factors that really played strongly in favor of that. So, but I hear you, and we're going to move on to the Athletic Trust Fund, which is, I need a motion to approve the expenditure of forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents from the Hollis Brookline Athletic Expendable Trust as the funding source for the FY twenty and FY twenty-one purchases as, as outlined in the public hearing.
Point of view.
I was going to ask you the same thing.
I have a question.
Did you amend the, um, agenda to have this law taken?
Oh, is it not on the agenda?
It's not. That's what I was going to say.
Oh, we did not amend the agenda to do that. It isn't on the agenda.
Well, I think it's, I mean, the, the way Dawn did the piece, she put the public hearing all together.
Right.
I did not put down the, uh.
It had made the trust at the bottom, but it doesn't have.
What would happen if we did it next month?
If we vote on this next month, does it merely, does it hurt us?
I, I don't see why it would hurt. I mean, it sits in an expendable trust right now. The voters approved the expendable trust going away to become the revolving.
But does it go away June thirtieth? Is that the problem?
Well, the money's still there, so.
Well, the money is there, but, so I guess, does it, does the full balance go to the new trust, and then we could just spend from there, or?
That was, so this is actually my question. I don't think there's anything about the authorizing warrant that would allow us to move money from the expendable trust to the new revolving fund. I think we have to spend all of this and then fund the new revolving fund.
Uh, I think the way the warrant article.
Yeah, I think that we discussed that at the budget committee.
The warrant article, but explicitly stated.
Okay, somebody have it in front of me.
That it would, uh, get, um, rolled into it. It would be used to fund the revolving account.
All right, hold on, hold on.
Any balance in it would be used to fund the revolving account. Because I asked the question, what happens if they approve, closing it and don't approve?
Right.
Opening it and they said that then their money would go into the general fund.
All right, somebody have the warrant, because just, so we can put my mind at ease.
We, that would be February.
I'm looking, I'm looking.
Sorry.
Okay, which warrant article would it be? Oh, I only have one, two, and three, and four. That's the other warrant, but public hearings, sorry. With said amount to come from the unassigned general fund balance resulting from the previously discontinued athletic expendable trust.
So essentially, it goes into the general fund, and then when you vote to create the revolving, then you pull it out.
Right, but we did vote to create the revolving, and it says it's coming out of the general fund.
But the general fund balance that comes from the athletic trust.
So, so it all needs to go into the general fund, and then we need to authorize it going from the general fund into the revolving fund? I think it's how this.
It's a two-step process.
Yeah, so I don't think we can leave it in the, um, in the athletic trust and then transfer it from trust to revolving fund. I think we have to zero out the trust into the operating budget and then take it, the, the thirty.
Into the general fund.
Yeah, I, I know it seems.
Yep.
Like it doesn't make any difference, but it, I think it's.
Right, you could do a motion to that effect.
The question is, can we do that next fiscal year?
I wouldn't recommend that.
Would or would not?
What?
Would or would not?
Would not. I think it.
Can we take a vote on something that wasn't posted?
Yes, I mean, the board could always.
Could do an adjustment right now.
That was my only question.
Yeah, no, the board.
So, I mean, I think we can, is it, so I think our concern is always, is the public aware, were they unnoticed, the fact that it was a public hearing for it tonight, I think they were on notice that it was something that would be discussed.
Right.
Yes.
What was the public hearing notice? What was the language?
The notice encompassed the, the, the various trusts, I believe.
Yeah.
So if, if it's in that, if it's in the hearing, then I, I think we're okay.
Yep.
But.
You can absolutely make a motion tonight. You know, the board can always vote on something, even if it's not public notice. It's not recommended, and we try to avoid that. But I think we've given notice to the public of what we're doing, and I think, uh, we're also looking at something that was approved by the legislative body, so there's no notion that something was done kind of behind the scenes.
And it is not taxpayer-funded money.
Correct.
It's.
But our policy does require us to have a hearing.
Right, and we did that.
So the question is, did we notice the hearing? That's what, that's all we can find out.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
We noticed the hearing.
We noticed the hearing, and it was in his discussion in the hearing.
But did, did the hearing notice include this item or did it just say maintenance trust?
No.
Kelly's, the document I worked off was Kelly's posting. I'm just trying to find it.
I know, I'm trying to.
Is it under public hearings?
And it was in the packet, posted in the packet as well.
Our packet? We don't, we don't see the postings.
No, in, in your packet, you have the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District Expendable Trust Public Hearing, June sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
It says it right here. Public hearing, notice of public hearing to the citizens of Hollis and Brookline, a public hearing will be held at six fifteen PM, Wednesday, June sixteenth, to expend funds from the Hollis Brookline Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund and Athletic Expendable Trust Fund.
Thank you.
I think that's good.
And my name's on it. There you go. So I think if we were, if we noticed that we would be spending it, then we need to make a motion. So first, we need an agenda adjustment to add it to deliberations. So I'm going to adjust the agenda to add a deliberative item to approve expenditures from the athletic trust. Is there any problem with that, or issues, or concerns? Okay. So at this point, I need a motion by members to approve the expenditures from the Hollis Brookline. Hold on, I don't have it. Athletic, okay. I need a motion to approve the expenditure of forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents from the Hollis Brookline Athletic Expendable Trust as the funding source for the FY twenty and FY twenty-one purchases as outlined in the public hearing.
Um, I, I don't think that's the correct motion.
I don't either.
I think the motion should be to transfer funds from the athletic.
The entire balance of the.
Athletic trust to the general fund.
Okay.
And to approve those expenditures that were noticed at the hearing.
Okay, so, would someone like to say that motion exactly as they just said it? So that Dawn can capture it.
Move to, um, transfer the, the entire balance of the, um, athletic fund to the Hollis.
Athletic expendable trust.
Athletic expenditure trust fund to the Hollis Brookline Cooperative, um, general fund. And to approve the expenditures of forty.
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
Six hundred.
Six hundred and.
Thirty-six dollars.
Thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, um, for the purchases outlined.
In the public hearing.
In, in the public hearing.
And Beth is seconding that? Is there any conversation on that? All those in favor? Five zero zero. Okay. Thank you for capturing that on the.
Now do we make motion to fund the revolving?
I don't think we need to make that motion because that was approved as a warrant article.
I, I would agree with that, and if Mr. O'Shaughnessy disagrees, then we can do that in the next year, because that is a.
Right, because that's, right.
Yep.
It's for fiscal year.
It's a new fiscal year.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So can you check with Ms. Jim and see if we need to make a motion?
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Jim, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Okay. At this point, we're moving on to no more deliberations and HB highlights.
I know you look at me, because I always have something.
Wait, no, I have some highlights.
Yeah.
I'm really impressed with HBHS and HBMS. Woo, okay.
I am too. Um, I, I guess since we met last, let's see, I got to help chaperone and be present for field day here and prom and get to volunteer at graduation, so it was an awesome experience. Just this last month has been really fun to be in our schools and seeing all of the success our students have had, so.
It's so nice that your children like you in the school so much. It must be nice to be able to go in, because mine don't like it very much.
This is, I guess, not, maybe a highlighter, kudos to everyone that's involved. But we've worked really hard, and you all have worked exceptionally hard to get us this far. I'm very proud of the fact that you've allowed us to come along for the ride, and our kids have gotten to appreciate that. And let's not let some of the current communication and public sentiment steal our COVID joy and the accomplishments that we've had. So don't let it get to you. Um, and, and I think that's much easier said than done, um, but we should be exceptionally proud of where we are. Are we a perfect district? There's no perfect district, because we send imperfect kids from imperfect families into a public school. But you guys have done exceptionally well under the circumstances.
Extremely well said.
My turn?
Yes.
I have a coworker who has students at South Eagan, and they came to play a game on the turf. And in the past, I've heard all kinds of feedback about what it's like playing on HB fields, and their kids raved about, about the turf and the experience there. So that was, that was nice to hear. The other thing is, I, uh, I think that the evidence speaks for itself, the, the leadership that has been cultivated within this SAU and this district in the way that, it's funny how the documents that we get to approve somehow seem to surface in all kinds of other districts. And organizations like NHIAA and other things, you know, the work that, that Gina and Bob and Brian have all done. In, in taking a leadership role, I know that it's never comfortable being on the leading edge and being the ones that catch the first stones, but when push comes to shove in an emergency, the, the cream has definitely risen to the top.
Absolutely, absolutely. Awesome, Melissa.
I just want to say that at graduation this year, just seeing the teachers at the beginning of the kids coming down and hearing the music just made it seem so normal. I mean, I said that to like three or four people. As soon as the chorus started singing, I was like, it feels like we're back to normal. It was, it was a great feeling. I was really glad that I volunteered and was there that day, because it made a big difference at the end, for the whole end of the year.
Yeah, and after corps, you guys always keep the kids right in the center, and that, not a lot of people do that, and that's really valuable. So appreciate it. Wow, that was really great HB highlights. Woo, it's catching on, Beth, it's catching on.
Now they want to go home and go to bed, so they can make it through the last day.
Okay, no, 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 no. We still have process observer, and we do have a non-public tonight, so.
Process observer, we did great considering that we had started a little bit late, and I thought having fifteen minutes of public input was very helpful. I enjoyed them, glad that they came. Um, we usually have none, so it was interesting to hear some people in the community speak. And we finished on time, pretty much.
Close. Okay. Thank you very much. So we are going to make a motion to, um, by roll call vote to go into non-public. Pursuant to RSA ninety-one A colon three, part two A. I believe it's, is it A or C? Is it?
It's reputation.
It's reputation, C, to discuss a matter which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Roll call votes, we're going to start with Liz.
Liz, aye. Beth, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Great. We will be going into non-public in a moment.
Eight fifty-eight.
At eight fifty-eight, thank you.